Welcome to our May 17th, City Council Meeting. All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
All right, Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Feis?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full council. The first item is a moment of silence. If you would please join in. All right, thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman at Large Sharon Jewen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move approval of the agenda with the following changes. On number five, please change all reference to James Scarlett's, change that to Blackhawk Street Investments LLC. This is under public hearings, number five. And then under number 15, which is a resolution, please remove that. The agreement is not quite ready for our approval. So make the changes in the agenda as stated and approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2021 as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an agenda. First up, our public comments. It's your opportunity to address the City Council on non-agenda-related items. And the first person we have up to speak in advance is Mr. Rod Lindquist.
Good evening, dear heart members of the council. My name is Rod Lindquist. I'm from Sartell, Minnesota, but I represent the ownership group of the Best Western at 205 West Fourth Street downtown Waterloo. The purpose for me to come here tonight is just really to just talk to the council members because we're going to do a news release tomorrow. And it will involve the council at some point. And we've done a lot of development over the years, and I'm always careful that you don't hear about a news release and you didn't know about what it was, so you're the first to hear. So we are announcing tomorrow that we're going to be opening up a bar restaurant. We're hoping to be open June 23rd. It is GR Kitchen and Taps, which is a new generation of Ground Round. It's a franchise affiliation of Ground Round. So our ownership group is going through the process right now to get things approved and get the liquor licenses. So I think on June 7th, I'll be back in front of you. But more importantly, I just want to stop in because I want to contact each of you individually some way to let you know that, hey, tomorrow, there'll be a news release out, press release. We're going to have a job fair Wednesday, Thursday, with the loosening up of employment. We're hoping that we'll get good turnout for that because we've got to hire a lot of people. And but more importantly, I want you to hear about it so that you're back to your work or whatever tomorrow. You're here on the street and didn't hear the press release and heard about it. I want you to say, oh, I know about it, instead of saying, oh, I didn't know about it. So that was it. Just wanted to do that quickly. I know you have a big day, a big night ahead of you and stuff, and I just want to thank you for your support all along and look forward to seeing you on June 7th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much.
And the hotel is looking really nice too as well. So thank you so much for all your efforts and keeping us all in communication about what's taking place. So best of luck to you. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. Good night.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else right now that would like to speak on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Just a few things. First of all, it was very, I felt really good about the fact when I drove down 63, I could see that the trail between Conger and Parker was being constructed. And the only question I have is that expected to be finished by the time Ragbri rolls into town. Secondly, driving down Park Avenue, I've seen that none of the ballers are up that stop traffic from going into those parking sections on our complete street between Washington and Franklin. And then the last thing is, and I'm sure that other people have wondered, what's going to happen with all that concrete rubble that is piled up at the old log site off of University Avenue there between Fletcher and 63?
All right, anyone with an update on the trail or can someone get to Mr. Morrissey?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. I will need to check Mr. Morrissey on the trail on 63 and see if it'll be done by that time. I'm not entirely sure if all of it will be done and opened by Ragbri or not, but I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
As far as the concrete that's on University Avenue at the Old Wiseman Site, that'll be removed as part of the project as well.
All right, Mr. Bennett Ballarts.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. We've been doing some of the prep work for Ragbri, so Park Avenue is really close to being done. And we're working on the painting and then hopefully here either next, this week or next week, we can hopefully try to get those put in.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Mr. On the same subject?
Different subject, but I didn't, before he sat down.
All right, Mr. Well, it's for, it's for him?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but as long as Mr. Bennett was standing up, two weeks ago at our, at our meeting, it was discussed that we were going to be pothole filling. It's one of my pet peeves with the extra gravel and everything. And it was discussed that the pothole filling was going to be done on third shift. And then I get back from vacation and I've got a number of messages, people complaining about the lanes being closed during the day and that they're pothole filling downtown during the day. Can you tell me what changed from what you addressed the council two weeks ago to now that we're doing everything during the day?
We're actually doing it both third shift and during the day. We're just trying to expedite it to get it done a little bit quicker. So unfortunately, some of the areas where the, for the patrons, for the businesses, you know, we're kind of doing that on the third shift and some of the main road portions we're doing during the day. Like I said, we're just trying to get it done a little bit quicker and try to get out of there.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Greider?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to extend, you know, it's May and so it's graduation season, so I just want to extend my congratulations to all of the new graduates and soon-to-be graduates in the Cedar Valley, some of whom I have during the day, and all of whom are a great testament to the future of the city. So I just want to extend that congratulations as we enter into graduation season.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just comment that I went to the police memorial service at Veterans Park last Thursday, and it was truly an inspirational event. I've gone to it before, but it was especially meaningful this year because of the anniversary of the death of Officers Hoing and Rice. And seeing them recognized was wonderful. So good job to everybody involved. It was a very moving event. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, motion to adjourn, close public comments. Or we could adjourn. Close public comments, receive comments, and place on file.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions of the bill's payment to 1A1 as follows. For May 10th, 2021, in the amount of $4,268,717.79. And for May 17th, 2021, in the amount of $3,266,466.40. Move to approve and place on file.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, I'd like to remove a few of these. First of all is 1A4 and 1A5, 1A10, 1A16, and 1B15.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on the other items.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, first is 1A4, and that's a motion to approve a resolution for the submission of a grant application to the HUD's Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes for a 36-month grant in the amount of $500,000 for the older adult home modification program. And if I might, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to include five with that because there are questions for Mr. Jones. If I could do both those together, Kelly?
Yeah, who is, is he here?
He's on the phone.
Okay, yes.
Okay, and then number five is the resolution approving the contract for the grant award between Waterloo Housing Trust Fund VIII and the City of Waterloo Community Development Department in the amount of $28,267 for repairs to existing single-family owner-occupied homes, of which 5,500 of this award must be spent on households at or below 30% of area median income or lower, and authorizing the community development director to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor, I wish that there was a different way to do this. I wish that when we made the, when we just make the motion that we can start asking questions about these because this is, four and five here are an example of, I just would appreciate Mr. Rudy Jones, the director, explaining to the public what these are and what they mean for the residents of Waterloo.
Mr. Jones, can you elaborate on the Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Home Grant for older adults?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Department of Housing and Urban Development provided communities with a notice of funding opportunities. And this one comes from the Lead and Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Department, very similar to our current lead grant, but they've added an additional pot of funds to help us address older adult home modification projects. The purpose of that is to help keep some of our elderly citizens in their home by providing projects that are low-cost, low-barrier, high-impact modifications that would reduce adults from falling, improve some general safety, increase accessibility, and improve their functional abilities in their home. So it will help them to age in place rather than move to nursing homes or other assisted care facilities. As mentioned, this is a three-and-a-half-year grant, minimum of $500,000, and we've got a couple of great partners that have come alongside to work with us, and without them, it'd be awful hard to even begin to apply for this. Those partners being the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging and the VGM crew that provide a lot of the specific technical assistance to pull all this off.
All right.
Any questions for that?
And number five, about $28,000 for repairs to houses?
Sure. The City of Waterloo receives an annual allocation, and this year it's $172,000 to address, again, housing needs throughout the community. And this is just a portion that we were awarded to help us kind of backfill some of our emergency repair projects that might need additional funds above and beyond what our emergency repair allocations are.
All right. All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 10?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, a motion to adopt a resolution setting date of public hearing is June 7th, 2021, to approve proposed repairs in conjunction with the 2021 sidewalk inspection and repair program Zone 1, and approve request to send out notification to property owners of proposed sidewalk repairs and estimate a cost, and instruct city clerk to publish a notice.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I just bringing this up once again, that being is that it sounds as though there will be city workers going out and inspecting the sidewalk squares within this zone, that I again am requesting that they make note of those squares that are in need of reconstruction due to being sunken or not level. And that's all that I'm asking of that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 16?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments for preparation of a COVID-19 relief recreational trails program, grant application for the replacement of the Cedar Prairie Trail Bridge, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking that this be explained so the public knows exactly what this is and what it means to Waterloo.
Mr. Anderson, a grant for trails, could you explain that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So this is a grant opportunity with some funds from the COVID relief package from the federal government. We looked at our trail needs. There's two old railroad bridges here connecting basically the Cedar Prairie Trail and Sergeant Road Trail in Cedar Falls in Waterloo in the Green Belt. This is two old railroad bridges that are in dire need of repair. The new alignment that we're proposing for the funding would actually only have one bridge back and realign the rest of the trail, so it would reduce our costs in the future for maintenance, but also continue to have this trail open.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then number 15, I think, B15, maybe?
Did you want to vote?
I think you could vote on that one.
Oh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 15?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Change Order Number 4 from Woodruff Construction LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for a net increase of $95,540 in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Center 2020 Skywalk Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Morrissey?
And again, well, Mr. Mayor, in looking at this and the attachments, excuse me, one of the things I noticed, which was pretty striking, was this change order is nearly 50% of the original contract sum. And I'm wondering why this costs so much, what it all involves.
All right. No Skywalk improvements and what's included?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So originally, we were just doing some smaller repairs to the Skywalk system as part of the contract. In working with the hotel developers, there were some leaking that was discovered. So we did a full analysis of the Skywalk and where the leaks were coming from. They needed repairs. And we're requesting to move ahead with the same contractor that's been working on the Skywalk to do more extensive repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Noel, if I may. How, how high have our cost overages been on this project?
For the convention center as a whole?
Now, what are we up to?
Well, are we talking about the convention center or the Skywalks?
Convention center and all ancillary issues connected with it, like the Skywalk is connected to it.
I can get you that answer tomorrow. I know it's on the sheets. I don't have that with me.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes. Excuse me.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take, wait, we have a couple of appointments. Cody DiMauro, Cody Payne, Kyle Kaiser, Courtney, oops, for all sewer maintenance workers at Waste Management, and Courtney Coleman to the marketing specialist at Leisure Services. Are any of you here? If you're here, please stand up. All right, well, if you are in TV land, we want to say congratulations for joining the City of Waterloo family. We also have one board appointment to the Terry Schaefer, Schaeffer, to the Memorial Hall Commission. That's a new appointment. So thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Are you here? Can you stand up? We got one. All right. All right, thank you so much for your service. Could someone take number two, please? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, those public hearing on the request by Cedar Valley Corporation LLC for a site plan amendment for a temporary cement patch or batch plant to be located across from 4342 Amesboro Avenue in the BP Business Park District.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to a site plan amendment for cement, temporary cement batch plant going, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Tom Bonner, project manager for Cedar Valley Corp., 2637 Wagner Road. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Knutson, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Dornoff for their help walking through this process. It's not something we do every day. We're here to request the, the second and third readings, I guess, if it passes the first reading tonight, to suspend some rules and so we can get started. We're working on the Highway 20 project out there. It will not be completed by Ragbri, I can guarantee you, but we got a shot for the eastbound lane, the first stage of the project anyway, to get going. Our subcontractor is making good progress, Peterson Contractors. We anticipate being able to pave first or second week of June if the weather holds. So our plant site's sitting out in western Iowa, just waiting, waiting for the word if this passes or not. And again, thank you for helping us through this process. We'd like to get started moving it in and stockpiling materials and setting it up if we could to be ready to go when, when our subcontractor is ready for us, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel will take that under advisement. So thank you so much. Any other comments about this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, considering pass for the first time, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4 to approving a request by Cedar Valley Corporation LLC for a site plan amendment for a temporary cement batch plant to be located across from 4342 Amesboro Avenue in the BP Business Park District with the condition that the project be completed by October 31st, 2021.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center second floor renovations.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the building official for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mrs. Clerk.
All right, our first bidder is Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid amount is $1,690,000. Alternate one, $28,900. Alternate two, $53,000. Alternate three, $222,200. And alternate four, $568,000. Our second and final bidder is Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid amount is $1,555,500. Alternate one, $23,000. Alternate two, $45,300. Alternate three, $187,000. And alternate four, $467,000.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the fiscal year ending 2021 budget amendment. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the budget amendment going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 1314 Blackhawk Street in the amount of $166,000 to Blackhawk Street Investments LLC with a development and minimum assessment agreement for the renovations of the former central garage.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion adopting resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property to Blackhawk Street Investments LLC in the amount of $166,000, located north of 1314 Blackhawk Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development minimum assessment agreement with Blackhawk Street Investments LLC for the renovation of 1314 Blackhawk Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at the southern end of Fairfield Street in the amount of a dollar to Todd J. Borwig, including a development agreement for infrastructure extensions and new infill housing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone, yes, sir, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Phil Gady, Ward Three. I didn't have an opportunity to sign the petition or even see it before any kind of vote on this. And recently, I signed a purchase agreement for the property adjacent to the Fairfield lot, 578 Cedar Bend. So I'd like to raise an objection to the development there. And in speaking with other members of the neighborhood that weren't able to make it tonight, they feel that they'd like to have their voice heard and have some time to do like a proper canvassing.
So you said you didn't sign a petition?
I didn't. I live on Longfellow, and I didn't get, it wasn't taken my house. That's a block away. So I feel like the petition didn't reach a wide enough area of the neighborhood. And I'd just like it taken off the table and given the neighborhood time to do a proper canvassing.
A canvassing. Aren't we beyond that point? Didn't they, we've already had public discussion with this about this project a while ago. This is the sale and conveyance at this particular point.
I feel like I need to raise an objection because I was not aware of it prior and...
So you didn't know about this at all?
No, no.
Okay. Marty?
The neighborhood organized the...
Yes, sir.
Right now, we have a gentleman up that is raising objection to the sale and conveyance to Mr. Borwig. How are we with regards to voting on this?
The code just requires that we have a public hearing, Your Honor. And so procedurally speaking, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit the council from, after the public hearing, proceeding to a vote.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein, if you have a...
No.
Can I wait till this counsel portion, or is it ingermaine to his comments?
She's going to make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Since no one seemed to be coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at the southern end of Fairfield Street in the amount of a dollar to Todd J. Borwig and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Well, I guess with Mr. Gady, I rise in opposition to this development agreement. As stated before, when the sale of land policy went up, there were 91 signatures on a petition of people opposed to not just the sale of that woods, 1.3 acres of woods, but also to any development out there. And I'm not opposed to Mr. Borwig having a development agreement at a place, but not, that the city should not be promoting, in my mind, destruction of the character of a neighborhood. You know, there's some questions, I believe, that need to be answered. And I know that they might be part of what a developer and the city are expected to do. But before, it had been raised about the soil out there and about that being a dump site in the past, out in the woods and that. In reading over the development agreement, I question, is the developer actually required to build those five houses? And if the developer is required to build those five houses, it appeared that one could be built each year for five years. And again, this is a dead-end street. Even with the cul-de-sac, it's a dead-end street. And what does that do for that neighborhood when there are yearly kinds of negative impacts due to construction to that beautiful neighborhood that currently exists? Also, I don't know, has the city obtained deed to that 1.3 acres yet, Mr. Mayor? I don't know that they have. It'd be nice as a Ward Three councilperson to be made aware of stuff like this, but I haven't been. And has there been any early entry agreement onto that property by anybody towards development of this land? Because it appears from the information I've received that there has been. And finally, the houses that will be put up in that neighborhood, if this passes, if the development agreement passes, are they really going to conform with the neighborhood? I've heard they're not going to have basements, may not look the same, not have similar lots. So for these reasons, and for the questions that I'm asking here, I'm opposed to this development agreement going forward at this time. And I'd just like to remind the council that a few weeks back here, there was a Dollar General store that wanted to go up out there by the theme park. And we had a few people step forward and oppose that development for how it would look. Well, I ask those same council people to ask themselves and dig deep down inside and ask themselves how this is going to look to that beautiful neighborhood with their beautiful woods doing this to that neighborhood. You've got at least 91 people, you've got Mr. Gady showing up here today, somebody who did not sign it. But I want to remind the council that that petition was only gone around for 12 days, from August 9th to August 21st. Could have gotten many more. There was 100% opposition to this going through. So for those reasons, those questions, I ask this council to reject this development agreement at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to also say a few things from a standpoint of, I'm not going to go into my previous comments or statements. I still feel the same way from a standpoint of what's going on in that neighborhood, listening to some of the desires of keeping the area the way that it is. So for me, I just cannot bring myself to support this development agreement.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if nobody else is, I would like an answer to that question about, does this development agreement actually say that the developer only has to put up one home per year for five years? And then the second thing is, does this development agreement allow the developer to transfer that development agreement to somebody else or get out from underneath that development agreement short of any default?
So the developer's not going to build his house there? Does that help me understand that second question or no? Do you...? Yeah, I didn't, sorry I didn't take those up. I thought you said you weren't going to support it regardless of the answers.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So we've set up the timeline in this, and Mr. Borwig is here as well to answer questions. You have him to set it up so that, yes, he can build one house a year on the five lots to continue to work on that. He can obviously work with the city. We've done projects like this before, whereas if they finish one house, they can then sell that to someone, so then they can work on the next house and so on and so forth. He cannot sell the remainder of the land without building houses on that to show his dedication to building on the area. We have had people out on the site in reference to another question for environmental review of the site, and the engineering staff has been looking at the site for laying out the plating of it so that we have the lots properly laid out, graded, drained, and all that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to repeat, I mean, if there's one house that is required to be built at least each year for five years, that's five years of this neighborhood having to put up with construction equipment and that going up and down this dead-end street, which would have never occurred, which would never occur if this development agreement was rejected, which it should be, just for that reason, for the quality of life, for the quality of that beautiful neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein?
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resol...
Well, I think we, don't we have, we have to vote on the resolution. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
That happened to me the last time.
That's okay. When you nodded at me, I thought, oh, that's my signal.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Todd J. Borwig for infrastructure extensions and new infill housing and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property south of 202 Fairfield Street for $1 to Gary D. Stevens and Aaron G. Stevens, including a development agreement for the construction of 30-foot by 40-foot, 1,200-square-foot detached garage. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to, so, selling conveyance of some city-owned property to Mr. Stevens and, Mr. Stevens, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property south of 202 Fairfield Street for $1 to Gary D. Stevens and Aaron G. Stevens and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Gary D. Stevens and Aaron G. Stevens for the construction of a 30-foot for the construction of a 30-foot by 40-foot, 1,200 square foot detached garage and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take number eight?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to receive and place on file the design recommendations submitted by the Police Patch Committee and adopt said recommendation.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Jewen?
I'd like to make, uh, an amendment, if I may, to the motion. And the amendment reads as follows. Resolution to receive, place on file and adopt the design recommendations submitted by the Police Rebranding Committee, designed to be affixed to the vehicle graphics, uniforms, letterhead and all police department objects with the exception of weapons slash revolvers. The mayor will be responsible for the implementation of this resolution as soon as is practical, including addressing the schedule for police weapons slash revolvers.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
That motion has been made with the second discussion about the amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to vote on that right now?
Yeah, for the amendment, you can discuss the amendment. And then, once that amendment is voted up or down, then we bring back the, the, the main item and then public can come up and discuss it.
And at that point, may I make an amendment or can I make an amendment now?
Um, we have to vote on.
Um. I don't think you can amend an amendment.
The amendment that you make would have to be germane to the amendment that Mrs. Jewen made.
At this point?
Yep.
Well, it's about the same topic.
You're adding a financial, an implementation piece. So I would say if it, can I see a copy of it?
So should we take the vote? Are you saying we should take the vote and then?
You can come with.
I come with my amendment?
Correct.
You could take the amendment, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want to look at this quick to see?
No.
Okay. Okay. This'll get confusing pretty quick.
It's okay. I just want to know the order.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
So we have, uh, Mrs. Jewen's amendment. Uh, discussion about just the amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you have a question about the amendment?
Well, I just wanted to just say that you can amend an amendment, but you can't go beyond that. But it has to be pertinent to the amendment that was submitted. No. And I do wish to discuss Sharon's amendment, just to ask a question. Mr. Mayor?
In a sense, my amendment is pertinent.
All right. So, uh, discussion about the amendment uh, to the resolution for the design recommendation. Mr. Morrissey?
Did, I didn't know if Councilwoman Klein had finished.
She.
I want to make an amendment. I'm just looking for someone to tell me when that moment is. Is it now? Because we were entering discussion of the first proposal when Sharon was allowed to make her amendment. So at this point, I think I should be allowed to make mine.
An amendment?
Which is germane to the whole thing. I would like to make an amendment to table this entire discussion until after the November elections and let the people of Waterloo decide what we should do.
Second.
So right now, do we even have a, um, so you want to table just her amendment?
I want to table all of it. I don't think.
Well, why wouldn't we bring this back to the floor after her amendment? Then you can table the file, a design and all this stuff she added.
Yeah.
But if you, if she tables, if she tables the amendment, don't we still have the, the?
Main motion.
Main motion still on the floor?
Table, Mr. Mayor, table.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
Yes, I would ask for a moment to look it up real quick so we do what's right and come through with Marty.
All right.
Mayor, I'm looking, this is Marty, I'm looking at 12 points, there are 12, six of Robert's rules. And I think, I think under the germane section, no new subject can be introduced on the, in the pretext of an amendment. So my opinion is Ms. Klein can make her motion, but I don't think now is the appropriate time because what's on the table is the amendment, Ms., um, um, Ms. Jewen's amendment. So I think the chair, my opinion is the chair should have the vote on the amendment and then proceed from there with any other motions.
So Mrs. Klein, the, the amendment, we vote on the amendment that goes to the motion and then you can move to?
All right. So as soon as we take this vote, I should reintroduce my amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Uh.
What I wanted to ask, uh, Councilwoman Jewen, your resolution includes, because you mentioned the rebranding committee, which is different than the language that is in this resolution. Does that include the attachment that has the Waterloo Police Protective Association's design that I believe was voted on by the rebrand committee uh, and approved to send to council? That's why it's here now.
The only, um, design that it recommends is the one, somebody just put it up on the screen. It's the one that was sent out with our agenda. That's the one. And that was the rebranding. We just, I just clarified the name of that committee was the Waterloo Police Rebranding Committee.
Okay. So, uh, my second question is, i- if this would succeed or this would be approved, your amended resolution, uh, does that end it? Or does, or what happens at that point?
That would be the end of, um, this discussion at this point and would allow for the change in the, of the logo to the vehicle graphics, uniforms, letterhead and all department objects with the exception of weapons and revolvers.
So we would vote on it a second term?
We would, it would need to, um, no, because it says then that the mayor could establish the schedule for the weapons and the revolvers. The thought is, we didn't budget for the weapons and the revolvers in fiscal year 22. So he's, th- this authorization would, would give to him the authorization to set up a schedule for when or if, um, there would be a change to the, the weapons.
Okay. Okay. So the question I guess I'm asking, well, I know I'm asking, is if we approve your amendment, then we're going to go back to the original resolution? Or is the original resolution off the table at that time? Kelly?
The original resolu, this becomes the new resolution with the new wording. So, because we're, in effect, her motion kept the language that is in the initial resolution up to, um, the, you, Mrs. Jewen, you call it the rebranding committee.
Yeah.
It has on the resolution, Police Patch Committee. And then it becomes a new sentence that talks about the implementation.
Okay. So we will have a second vote on this then, correct, Kelly?
Yep. So once you, if you adopt the amendment, then you adopt the resolution again.
Okay. Yep.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, um, the amendment?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. So we have the amendment on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amendment. I would like to table all discussion of this, all implementation of this until after the November election to allow the people of Waterloo, just as my colleagues have said, they want to listen to the people always, to allow them to let us know whether it is wanted in this community or not wanted. They get to make the decision.
Second.
All right. The motion has been.
May I ask a question?
Can I, let me, let me clarify what's been done. So the motion has been made to table this until after the November elections. That's the.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I, I, I do believe that, that, that Councilwoman Klein, I understand what she's saying, but I believe we needed to have the motion that the, that with the amendment is complete, read as a complete resolution before it is tabled. Otherwise, we're tabling basically nothing. Um.
Okay. To follow his point of order, would Kelly read it back to us?
So, can I ask a question? So there's an ordinance that gives a specific timeframe that was, um, voted on, I think unanimously, that something had to be in place. What was it by?
June 31st.
By June 31st, something had to be in place. Or, or I think it was nothing, correct?
Yes.
And so, right now, it is to take the recommendation of the, the design, uh, that was shown up there, that is the recommendation for that. Um, Mrs. Clerk, at this point, if, is it to table, is it to table the design in, the, to table the recommendation of the patch committee till after November? Wouldn't that be the, the motion? Which in essence would mean after June, after the end of June, it would be.
We'd have nothing.
You'd have nothing. Is that?
We'd still have to take the, the current.
So Mr. Mr., um, uh, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Klein would like to table this till after November?
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to insert a phrase that we delay that date till after the, the deadline date till after?
I think that's already passed.
Yeah. Yeah, we, um, so the ordinance that was done, um, which was unanimous, stated that, um, the committee or patch committee or whatever it's called would, uh, come to a recommendation to the council. Uh, it also stated that if there is, I believe, if there's not a decision by the end of June, at the beginning of the new fiscal year.
It just said that the patch would be gone.
It would be gone. So there wouldn't be anything, um.
Kind of fluffy original resolution.
So the, you know, um, postponing or tabling this until after would just mean till after that, wouldn't we still have to follow the ordinance?
Um, yeah. Okay. So the, the original resolution, well, excuse me, the amendment, the original resolution that was passed, um, it states that, okay, so Section 5 talks about June 30th, 2021. It reads that the committee shall present a final report to the city council for the council's approval by June 30th, 2021. So the committee is following within the recommendations of, or the resolution set by council that they provide a final report, which is part of what this resolution does. In addition to that, as far as the patch goes, the resolution lays out that a committee is going to be established. Section 2 states that a revision of the current Griffin logo will be initially considered by the committee. It does not specify that the patch would be removed. It only says that.
Be replaced.
I don't see a problem. I don't see a problem with my amendment at all.
So we, so we have, um, so we have the, um, uh, Mrs. Klein moved to table this till after the November elections. Um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
But we need to know what to table and a motion hasn't been made for a resolution to adopt that, that Councilwoman Klein can table. We passed the amendment, but now we got to go back and read the full resolution because Sharon Jewen's resolution did not encompass everything. Therefore, what I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is that the full, uh, resolution, the motion to approve the resolution that includes Sharon's amendment or Councilwoman Jewen's amendment be read, seconded, and then once that is done, then Councilwoman Klein can then proceed to ask that that be tabled?
We just voted on that.
Voted on what?
So he wants a, so, Kelly, for her to bring forth the table, he wants it in proper language. So, um.
Wait.
I mean, in a sense.
It was.
Yeah. In a sense, Mr. Morris, Mr. Morrissey is simply asking that we make another motion and second to read the motion that we just, the amendment that we just adopted, which in effect is a brand new resolution. And then, in effect, Mrs. Klein and Mr. Bozen would second the same thing we just did.
So we're free to, free to vote on it?
It's, it's up to you. If you want to make the motion again and again, you can.
I feel like we're on a loop.
So we, so we have a, we have a motion to, just a motion to table it to after November.
I would say proceed with the motion to table.
All right. So a motion to table. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Can I ask a question then? Um, you wanted to table it until after election. Was the election, just waiting for the new people then to address it after they take office? Is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because you're not saying that exactly how it turns out dictates anything. You're just saying the new people then would address it.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
And to clarify that a little further, we would probably want to table it to January because that's when the new individuals would take their seats.
I would, I would be amazed if a sitting council whose members were clearly, had an election affect their sitting, their seat. I would be amazed and disheartened if they pushed something through in the last two months of their term.
So.
Knowing that the people had spoken.
So in regards to the timeframe, Mr. Bozen?
Yes, sir. I, I think that Mrs. Klein needs to, uh, take back her, her amendment so that it clearly states that, uh, after the election and the vote would take place after the first of the year.
Yeah.
Because after the election, we're, this is, we're looking at the same council until January 1st.
Right.
So if she would, I'll take back my second if she takes, and to reword that properly.
All right. For the third time, I make a motion to table this whole discussion and any action related to it until the first of the year, when the new council takes its seat.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to vote on, you, you want to speak to that?
I would like to speak, yes. So everyone up here has a mandate until the end of the calendar year in which the election for their seat takes place. Everyone up here was elected by margin, some small, some large, but everyone up here was elected by the people either of their ward or the city at large. Um, if, if the, the point is that this is controversial and we should wait till the next council, then why not wait till the next council after that? When myself, Mr. Bozen and Mr. Amos are gone and it's a whole new council? Or the council after that, because those people were here? This is masquerading as democracy when what it really is is it's taking away the voices of the people who voted us to be here by, by stating that everything that's controversial has to wait till another election. By that logic, we will do nothing here. We will not do budgets, we will not do this, we will not do incentive packages, we will not do infill that's controversial because of neighborhoods. What this does is it literally takes democracy away from the voices of people who ensconced us here for the duration of our term, simply because people don't like the way the current council is. And I'm sorry that that's the way it is, but elections have consequences. Now, if there is another council that is elected come this November and they come in January 1st and they have a majority and they want to pass a resolution getting rid of the original resolution, they have every single democratic right to do that. But to state that the election that elected all of us no longer matters over six months before Election Day is frankly disappointing. It's anti-small D Democratic and it's silencing the voices of tens of thousands of Waterloo residents because we're unhappy with the way this is.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
I'm voting on mine, right?
Yep. On the motion to table till.
All right. Yes. Yes, please.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mr. Greider?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we have a, um. We have a, um, a resolution on the table. It is now time to hear our public. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and you have all of your three minutes to let us know your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. It was interesting being here earlier for the, the work sessions. We were talking about scooters and how much people like scooters, and it was going to be great to have some scooters, and we're all excited about scooters, because that's what the people want. At a previous meeting, council members said that it really doesn't matter what the people want, because they're going to do the right thing. Hey, they, you've got the, you've got the higher road for the higher morality, and it doesn't matter what the people want. It's not a matter of democracy. It's a matter of what y'all think is best. We know full and well, there's a lot more support for this Griffin than there are scooters. Everyone up here on this dais knows that. You know, I look at this, uh, it's not up there anymore. I look, I look at the new patch design, and I look over at the chief's arm, and there's just, like, there, there's no comparison. The, the, the patch, the patch that the chief's got on his arm right now, that, that's the cool one. That's the one people are going to pick off the shelf. You know, we shouldn't have to go back to wondering why this whole thing is, is coming about. It is not a popular issue. And I go back to what I was, what I was told by the, by the, by the child of, of a fallen police officer. His father died under that Griffin. And to remove that Griffin is some, is, is, in a way, it's disrespecting that memory. And those family members shouldn't have to come up here and speak to the memories of their fallen, of their fallen fathers, their fallen husbands. That shouldn't have to happen. We can talk nice about a ceremony that took place remembering the, the anniversary of that happening, but we just kind of want to push that aside. You know, we talked, we were talking about renaming, it got pulled from the agenda, we're talking about renaming the Sullivan Brothers Center. That's a big part of our history, too. There seems to be a big push to be renaming things and getting away from our history. And really, it doesn't matter what the people want, small D democracy. It's what y'all think is better. There's a reason that we've got so many people here, because it's not simply about a patch. It is about what people have stood for, people, good people, that go out and put their lives on the line every single day, that do jobs most people wouldn't dream of doing, wouldn't want to do, wouldn't want to be sentenced to do. And they do it every day for us. This is an important function of our city government. The finest people that work for the city of Waterloo work in the police department, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll stand up and say that. The problems that we have in Waterloo aren't because of the police. The problems we have in Waterloo are because of crime, and I support the police. Thank you.
Mayor and council, Leon Mosley, 99 Mosley Street. I stand up here and say, you got better things to worry about in this city than the patch. The patch is that much of a problem. You got people dying every day. You had shootings over on Grant Street today. They had to block the street off. You had a, a, a lady get shot six times in the head, and you're worried about a patch? The Griffin ain't killed nothing. It's the people. They need to work with the police department, give up the information, and start bringing down crime. The biggest thing you got going in here is the funeral homes. They're making money. Because people are dying, and you're worried about a patch? Come on here. I got some, um, I belong to a group, I'm a thirty-third degree Mason, and one of the only ones around here in this whole area. And the Griffin means something special to us. And I got reins with the Griffin on it that we hand out, because I, I belong to a group called addicted to helping others, not to ourselves, others. And it, I think it's a shame that this city has got people dying and getting shot every day, or the area getting shot, not in your areas you live, but the rest of the city, and you're worried about a patch. Lord, have mercy. What's the next thing you're going to worry about? The color of the fire department's trucks? Come on, give me, I mean, if you want to do something productive up here, talk to the citizens about stopping the violence. Or pretty soon, ain't nobody coming here, and you're going to be the only thing left up here. And then, who are you going to be monitoring and helping? People are dying. You got kids getting shot, kids. Has anybody spent as much time worried about the kids? We can talk about it, but what have you done about it? Talk is cheap. You can talk all day long, some of the best speakers, they talk all day long and say nothing. I like to see some action stopping these kids from getting shot, and nobody knows anything. Nobody sees anything. On an airline highway, two hundred kids out there, a kid gets killed right in the middle of them, and nobody saw nothing. I got to go.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I applaud both these people for coming up here and speaking. I'm going to put a little different spin on it that a lot of you don't even know. The Griffin was started in fourteen hundred B.C. And we're offended of it, because some Nazi used it, or some Klansman used it? That's ridiculous. This Griffin is in Alice in Wonderland. It's in Harry Potter. It's been on Catholics, it's been on churches, it's been on Muslims, and it is a sign of strength, protection, and integrity. And that's what we need.
Uh, sir, sir, hey, sir, could you state your name and address for the record?
Ah, Terry Shepherd, fifteen thirty-four Longfellow Avenue.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I agree with Mrs. Klein in the aspect of, the people ought to be voting on this Griffin. They ought to be voting on a lot of other things, and I understand there's a lot of city business that needs to get done, but when it's an important thing like the Griffin or other things that, that come up in front of the city, and I will speak on, on something else on that in a little bit, but I hear Jonathan talk about, excuse me, I forgot your last name.
Fine.
Talk about ten thousand people or twenty thousand people voted us in, et cetera, but you don't talk to us. I have not had a councilman call me about one item that's coming up on the agenda. And now you've got two weeks to know what's coming up. Nobody talks to me. Nobody, how many of your constituents that you are representing have you talked to about what they feel about what's coming up? Not very many, I'm sure. I, I have to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Easter, eight thirty-five Olympic Drive. Greetings, Mayor and council members. I, I shudder to think of the time that has gone in on this issue. The committees, the let's this, let's that, the thousand dollars to redo something that the citizens really do not want done. So, how about taking that allocation of dollars, and let's put, let's put the rubber to the wheel, and use the money to get down to the bottom of the problems and solve the problem? We have crime, crime, we have drugs. I don't even want to go out to Walmart at night, after dark, or some other places, and I, I'm fearful. My, my son tells me, "Mother, keep your head on a swivel." And that's not a fun way to live in the city of Waterloo. It's foolishness. Let's spend the time and the dollars and get to the bottom of the problem and start working with it. I'm not fearful of police, of, of Griffin, but then, they don't come to my house, because I haven't been naughty. So, let's, let's get committees to work on the problem and solve it. Instead of marching and banging drums and whatever, let's, let's go to somebody's home and help them paint their home. Let's help them plant a garden to raise some vegetables, to help put food on the table. That's not only going to help the adults, it's going to be a strong signal to children in the neighborhood, in the family. Generation follows generation, is, I read in the Good Book.
And after the gentleman, I think we have two people on Zoom we'll take, and then we'll continue with, uh, in person.
All right. My name is Rob Camerata. I'm the president of the Waterloo Police Protective Association. The city council met on August twenty-fourth and voted to form the rebranding committee to redesign our patch. Their mission was to ask the community for new patch submissions, and then narrow the submissions down to one new proposed patch. They were supposed to give first consideration to submissions that contained a revised Griffin. This is supposed to be a fair and unbiased process, with an equal number of members from both sides of the issue overseen by the two at-large city council members. As it turns out, this was not a fair and unbiased process, and here we are today, with one new patch up for consideration designed by the WPPA, only as a last-ditch compromise after the rebranding committee's failure. We requested the city council abandon this resolution and allow the Waterloo Police Department to keep the patch that is, that has proudly worn for fifty-seven years, while humbly, while humbly serving the citizens of Waterloo. The real experts find no correlation between the Griffin and hate groups. One expert opinion from the Anti-Defamation League, whose basis, whose basis is to secure justice and fair treatment for all, with the ultimate goal of a world in which no group suffers from bias, discrimination, or hate, has stated that there are no ties between the Griffin and any hate groups. Since this process began, WPPA members have felt a lack of support from the city government. The mayor and city council has the ability to change how we feel by supporting us through your actions tonight. There have been several resignations since the rebranding committee was formed. Officer Andrew Sears, four years. Officer Stephen Crozier, thirty years. He was three years short of a full retirement. Sergeant Andrew Clark, thirty-one years, also three years short of a full retirement. Officer Jeremy Nichols, five years on. Investigator Deanna Duvalier, ten years on. Officer Jordan Helgason resigns this Friday, two years on. This is not count the numerous officers that have been actively applying for jobs at other law enforcement agencies or within the public, public sector. We should be focusing on officer retention, as we are seeing an all-time low in officer applicants. Fifty officers will be retiring in the next ten years. Experience matters. As you know, the patch issue is not eligible for a citywide vote. If it was, we all know what that outcome would be, and be it overwhelming support for the patch. I assure you that the election in November will be the real vote on the Griffin issue, and your actions tonight will determine if you're sitting any seats in the future. Support our officers, represent our constituents, save the Griffin.
We have two people on Zoom. Want one, one person on Zoom that would like to speak, state your name and address for the record, and let us, you got three minutes. All right, Mrs. Graves.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I just want to say that the many people who have reached out to me via email, text, phone calls, um, do not feel that it represents serve and protect. And for the past thirty years, people that I have spoken with have been fighting to have it moved. I can, um, attest to that, and I became a community activist twenty-five years ago. So, I know that it was being addressed then. My grandparents and great-grandparents left a legacy that I am very proud of. The Pledge of Allegiance ends with indivisible with liberty and justice for all. If, if we feel that we're not being treated equal, what's going to change that? Coming together. I do not feel it was a waste of time for the rebrand committee. However, we're trying to compromise. Secondly, as a child, I witnessed my aunt being beat by Waterloo's finest. I don't often share this story, but as a child, an eleven-year-old child, and she weighed approximately a hundred and twenty pounds, and I witnessed her being beat, simply because we were taking apples off of a tree. So, the symbol for me does not represent integrity, respect, honor, protect. But as I got older, I realized not all officers were bad. But that was my experience. And every time we have this conversation, it reminds me of what I witnessed. When you're doing something that is going to bring us all together, I'm all for it. This is, this has nothing to do with, uh, oh, I'm just, I'm just so, you just don't understand. You just truly don't understand. And if you could put yourself in my shoes as an eleven-year-old and watching your aunt being beaten, just because we were stealing apples off of a tree? And today, my parents live in that house. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Graves. All right. We have another speaker. Yes, ma'am, please come up. State your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Becky DeCrye, twenty-six sixteen Gloria in Waterloo. You mentioned the number of people that elected you. If they'd known you were going to be, go crazy on this issue, I don't think you'd have those votes. And you're concerned about who thinks this is proper, not bring it up in the general election. Let the people say. If you get ninety-eight percent of people saying, "No, we don't want this," or, "Yes, we do want this," then you have a, then you have a vote. This issue has caused, I think, more divisiveness in this city than anything in the past that I know of. I've been here since nineteen eighty-four-ish, and I have never seen such divisiveness, and I, it's this issue. That's crazy. I don't get what the, why you people are so adamant about getting rid of the Griffin, that people treasure so much, and you can't say, "Oh, it's the patch on the, the shoulder that's causing problems, oh, that evil patch." No, it's people's attitudes and trying to divide people. This is the most divisive issue I've seen. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cry.
Mayor, council, Teresa Culpepper, eleven nineteen Cottage Grove, Human Rights Commissioner. I stand before you, I guess perplexed, because forming a committee was to bring us together. And that committee was charged with looking at several designs. No design came forward. That just simply said Waterloo Police Department. That just simply said Waterloo Police Department because everybody who was polled would have rather had that. But we put it forth to artists to give them, us their rendition of what a Griffin would look like. So I stand behind any decision that committee made because we followed the directive. We had Bozen as well as Juan making sure that we followed everything to the letter. That being said, I'm tired of explaining black pain. I am tired. If you have had your child get off the school bus and walk two blocks home in a Columbus school hoodie to be held at gunpoint by police for breaking no crime, but simply needing the description of a suspicious black man at 11 years old, I can't explain that to anybody white, and I'm not going to anymore. Who we were isn't who we are. I believe that we are making great strides to be a community where there is unity in it. But who we were, there were different laws followed on different parts of town. Different things happened to different parts of our community, and we can all pretend it didn't happen. But there are other 11-year-olds, Latanya, other people scarred by things that have happened. So in an effort to move forward, I agree, the entire Human Rights Commission agrees, with doing something to move forward past where we were. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Joy Aarons, 415 Cornwall, Waterloo. I am tired of being a police wife and having my children, that I have to defend them when they were little, when someone would come up to them and say, "You see that cop over there? He's going to take you to jail if you're not good." Well, that's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. And I told this woman, those children, their daddy is an officer. And he's a very good officer, and he loves them just like you love your children. How dare you speak to my children like that? And Mr. Morrissey, my husband before he died, spoke with you and asked you if you thought the Griffin was racist. And you said, "No." And don't, don't wiggle your eyebrows because he did.
Ms. Aarons, please, please address me.
No. This is ridiculous that this has gone this far. I told you months ago, when this first came out, that my husband's urn bears the Griffin very proudly. And all of you, you can say what you want, that you were elected, and, but you're not listening to your constituents, not at all. There's a petition that has been out. There's far more messages or signatures for the Griffin than they are for against. And that's all I got to say about that. It's ridiculous.
I think, ma'am, if you could just wait one second, you can sit up front, though. We'll come to you next. We have Ms. Joyce Livingston that's on the, in Cyberland. State your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Yeah, my name's Joyce Livingston, and my address is 3105 Grand Boulevard. So I just want to make the comment that the people who are in such big support of the Griffin literally get up in front of you guys and say things like, "You people," really referring to us black people that have been done wrong by the police or have our stories and incidents of us getting, you know, beat by the police, like President Graves talking about watching her aunt or having my friends have their personal experiences, me having my personal experiences. So I think it's pretty obvious who's for and who's against the Griffin. I also think that it's obvious when we say things like, "Oh, just vote on it. You'll see, you'll see." Okay, well, obviously, black people make up about 13, 14% of Waterloo. So if you say, "Just vote on it," obviously, you're just saying that because you know it's the black people that have the issue with the Griffin because it's offensive to us. So it's nice that certain people have the privilege to stand up there so proud and speak so proudly of the people who have caused great trauma and great harm to those in our community without any regards to us. And even those in our community who would agree with them because maybe it didn't happen to them. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Ma'am.
Thank you very much. My name's Tracy Chapala. I live at 1847 Locke Avenue here in Waterloo. I first saw the Waterloo police car and their patch at a police conference a number of years ago. Out of a sea of parking lot full of police cars, it really stood out. It looked very impressive. I only moved to your city about two and a half years ago. I have never talked to my councilman. I'm not even sure who that is. I have talked to Ms. Klein before. What I wanted to say, and I wanted to kind of bring it around to something else. If you have this kind of money to spend on changing a patch, I've got a lot of potholes that really could use fixing. You can tell who lives in my area because when we get off the 218, we all drive in a serpentine around all the holes that we're trying to avoid hitting. You filled one, but missed the other six earlier in the street. So if you have this kind of money, may I suggest that you invest in fixing your roads? I've lived all over the country. I grew up in Buffalo, New York. I've lived in Michigan, Missouri, New Hampshire, Wyoming. You're the worst roads I have ever experienced. This city has really the worst roads I have ever seen. Okay? So if you have this kind of money to spend, can we spend it maybe on fixing the roads that need to be fixed? Because I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have Mr. Jennings? After that, Mr. Jennings, I didn't see you back there. I know you have some comments. So we'll take this gentleman. We'll take Mr. Jennings, and then we have someone online that would like to speak.
My name is Carol Kino. I'm a retired Waterloo police officer. I worked for Waterloo for 35 years, and I was very, very, very proud of that patch. Okay? Mr. Morrissey knows me because I went out with him when he represented the Department of Human Services on calls that he just needed some assistance because, I'm sorry, he was afraid to go by himself. Ms. Ramus knows me.
So yeah, just know, I mean, we just, no personal.
Okay. Because, because I was at East High School for 11 years. Okay? But during the time that I was on the department, I was, I was a school resource officer for 11 of that, at East High School. I also taught there at Emmanuel, Walnut Ridge, Columbus, and at East High School for, for the freshmen. There are hundreds and thousands of Dare shirts in Waterloo at that time over probably a 15-year period that had that Griffin on them. I still, I still have probably six or seven of them in my drawer that I work when I go outside to, you know, to work. Okay? I also was part of what was called, I was a supervisor or whatever for, for a totally African-American group of students, young men at East High School. They were called the Dukes, which stood for Desire, Unity, Keeps, and Excellence, and Successful. Okay? It was, it was a great group. They learned how to go out into the community. We had fundraisers. They, they did turkeys for, for needy people, Easter baskets for kids in Easter time. I mean, it wasn't a black and white thing. The kids at East High knew that I wore that patch right next to them for 11 years. You know, this branding committee is worthless. Talk to some of the people that were on it. Talk, you know, and I'm going to address you, Mayor, because it needs to be redone again. There were feelings, there, there is a lady that's on the branding committee that whose husband came up with the last two patches. I'm sorry, but I think that's conflict. I seriously think that's conflict, and it should be revisited. Mr. Gray, you know, did I vote for you? I'm addressing the mayor. I'd like to address you, but I won't.
I'm pretty sure he'd be available to have a convo with you, good sir.
Well, and I, you know, the only one, and I sent everybody an email within the last couple of days. And I don't know, show of hands, if you want to admit whether you, whether you read it or not. I know that Mrs. Klein did. And thank you, Mrs. Juan. But we went to Wales, Wisconsin. The Griffin is all over everything. Street signs, the sides of vehicles, banners, flags, you know, in a little old village of Wales, Wisconsin. Is it, is it racist or KKK? Hmm, no, I don't think so. My youngest son, who's a chiropractor, lives there, and I know he's not. Okay? But if nothing else, please revisit this committee thing because it's not working. I know that there are members that need to be, it needs to be redone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We have Mr. Jennings, and then we have someone on unless you no longer plan to speak. Yeah, come on, sir. And then Mr. Mueller, would you like to speak as well, if you want to come up? I'll let the person on Cyberspace go after Mr. Jennings, and then we'll bring you up.
Mayor, Council, my name is Thomas Jennings, 3391 Westridge Drive, Waterloo. I'm a retired City of Waterloo police officer and a lifetime member of the community. I spoke before you once before about the rebranding of the patch. I watched many of the brand, rebranding committee meetings. They had a difficult task. It was my understanding, it was supposed to be, see what we could do to redo the current Griffin. The end result, that, that never happened. I don't know how they got off track. I don't know why we got off track, but they got off track. In my opinion, this proposal that was put out by the W Waterloo Police Protective Association is an inactive frustration. I mean, they know, they're not stupid. They know where this is going. The men and women of this department work very hard. Some have given their lives in serving the community and do not deserve this lack of support and criticism. It's wrong. I am hoping that when you keep saying revolver, we're talking pistols because the Waterloo Police Department, the last I knew, no longer carries pistols. We got rid of that in the 90s, so we don't carry revolvers. I, I question if this was a, done with a full background of what these men and women do. I will say this, the compromise that they did come up with is to go back to the basic, basic design that we used in 1964. Make, make your, your picture a triangle, put Waterloo Police Department, and you got it. That's what they got rid of in 1964. I take exception to people referring to then-police chief Robert Wright, Jack Bender, the Waterloo Courier, to imply they're racist. My God, the, the, Chief Wright served the city for years. He's dead, and now we're questioning his motives? I, I think that's wrong. But compromise is compromise. I think we should be moving forward. But I will say this, I do agree with Erin M. Page. She made the statement to the rebranding committee that the designs that were chosen, the Peacock, the Griffin, whatever those two that were first sent, did not have any characteristics of the Nazi eagle, and I agree with her. I agree with her 100%. But in the same sense, Mayor, Council, the same can be said of the Griffin. You can't have it both ways. You can't say the eagle that the Nazis used ain't the same as the Griffin. And if you want to rebrand the Griffin, I, I'm okay with that. But, but this, I think we're going back. I, I don't understand. I'm getting old. I don't understand why we're paying for something that's not needed. I would ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Wilder on Zoom. Please state your name and address for the record, and it's your floor.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Mia Wilder. My address is 129 University here in Waterloo, Iowa. First of all, I just want to thank, I just want to thank the council for their service and you, Mayor, for your service. And I also want to thank those officers for their service as well. The main point that I want to make to you all today is it's impossible for a black individual to be able to explain to you how it feels when, when we see the symbol. Because I understand that you've all done your research and you've proven that it's not racist. And, and, and I understand and I appreciate you being stylish. However, once you hear that a symbol once was used to mean a green-eyed, excuse my language, a green-eyed nigger eater, I don't see how you expect for black people to feel comfortable with that symbol. And every time when y'all talk about it and you're like, "I don't understand why you people. I don't understand why they. I don't understand why these individuals." Listen to me. We're all in the same community. So if it affects me, then it should affect you. If I'm offended by something, then you should at least be able to step off of where you are and be like, "You know what? I would hate for it to be a, a green-eyed, uh, uh, I don't even know any derogatory terms for white people because I don't do that." But you wouldn't feel comfortable if there was a symbol in your city that made you feel some sort of way. And if the majority of the individuals that had a problem with the Griffin were white, we wouldn't even be having this issue. The only reason why it's an issue is because the African-Americans have a problem. How come you can't just look at it and be like, "You know what? I see why somebody would be offended by that, and I would hate for any child to feel uncomfortable with the officer of the law." If your husbands and your fathers and all of that were, were great officers, then they didn't work for the patch. They worked for the people. They worked for the city. You don't get hired to work for a patch or a brand. You get hired to work for us, the people, a collective. And we are saying that the patch makes us uncomfortable. I don't want anybody pulling up behind me with an insignia that, that identifies them as somebody who's out to kill me. I live a great life. I only speak love and light into my community, and I expect for my officers to do the same thing. And that's all I got. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mueller.
My name's Len Mueller. I live in Waterloo. I'm a very proud 35-year veteran of the Waterloo Police Department. Don't start the clock yet. I had five minutes of speech going on. I called down here today. They say, "You don't have to sign in. Just go on the internet." I went on the internet, called back. Well, you don't have to sign in. You just come up here and show up. And we don't do the five minutes anymore. Now I spent two hours paring it down to hopefully three minutes. Now I've been sitting back there jotting stuff down that I'm going to spout off about. I have no idea where the hell my time is at. I would appreciate a little patience, Mayor.
Two minutes and 30 seconds.
Well, we should be used to that kind of response.
You asked me a question.
And I asked for a little leniency. There's one thing you learn on the Waterloo Police Department when you come on is the word discretion. Waterloo cops have the discretion. Everything's not always black. It's not always white. There's always a center area, and you have the discretion to do what's right, to make sure you get done what is right. Why not extend the deadline that you were talking, you passed a resolution, you want to get this done by November or December, pass the resolution, but say it doesn't have to be implemented for a year? That way you got both bases covered. Think outside the box. Maybe legally can't. I don't know. There's a large silent majority out there that approve of the Waterloo Police Department. If the citizens knew at the last election what they know now, five of you wouldn't even be sitting up there right now. And I'm gonna go way off script here because things need to be said. People getting up here saying, "You cops, you people." We all live in Waterloo. I live Waterloo. The damn skin of your, the, the skin you have doesn't mean a damn thing. I got a lot of friends who are black. You've heard that 10 million times. It ain't your skin color. It's your attitude, behavior, and conduct that will get you butt-throated in jail. If your cops pull you over, act accordingly. Comply, comply, comply. It's a simple damn word to remember. There's a reason there's a dis- There's a reason there's a disproportionate amount of people up in jail because they committed a crime. Doesn't have a damn thing to do with their skin color. No cop gets up in the morning, whether it be Waterloo, Chicago, Minneapolis, anywhere else, and say, I want to go out and kill somebody today and get into a fight that's going to cause me issues with my career. Nobody says that. I'm not saying things could have been done differently in these other cities, but don't come down on the Waterloo Police Department for what's happened in the other parts of the nation. This rebranding committee, I'm, I'm not even gonna get into it. The only reasons this came about last year was because of the anti-police movement across this country, a new police chief, especially the makeup of our current city council. That's why this rebranding committee came about. Rob touched upon, I hear you, you can turn it off. Rob touched upon officers who are leaving.
I'll give you, I'll give you 30 seconds because I interrupted you earlier.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mayor. I realize there are those of you here who could care less about the history and heritage of the Waterloo Police Department. There are over 200 active and retired officers, white and black, are, who are so very proud of our police department. I realize there are those of you who don't agree with what has been said here today. You're probably thinking, you don't understand. You have, 10 more seconds, please. You haven't walked in our shoes. To you, I say, last week, last week, we honored Waterloo police officers who gave their lives in the line of duty, most of whom were wearing the Waterloo Police Griffin. To you, I say, you don't understand, nor have you ever walked in our shoes. Thank you.
Forest Dilawu, 1725 Huntington Road. I've been coming to these meetings for years. I have never seen a topic that split Waterloo like this is, and I think it was a planned split. I think it was an attack on the Waterloo PD. Those people, if you treat them right, they'll treat you right. I've been pulled over many, many times and given citations, and my words are yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am. If you stand there and argue with them, you're going to get a ticket and you're probably going to go to jail. That's what our officers deserve. I talked with one this morning, a break-in issue in my neighborhood. A very nice lady came to my house and, and I thanked her, and I told her, I'm not afraid of the Griffin on the side of your car either. And she said, thank you for your support. And I would thank her for doing her job and doing it right. I think this thing needs to be voted down, forgotten about, and get on with running and fixing our city. There are so many, I believe, crooked things going on in this city that need to be straightened out. Drugs are horrible, absolutely horrible. I hold a little baby several times a week that is born, a drug baby. That tears your heart up, Mayor. And why? Because there's so many drugs in this city, and people won't turn each other in because they don't want to get in trouble. We need more cops, and we need more good cops, and we need them out there ticking these drugs off the street so they don't destroy our children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Bury this Griffith, get it over with, leave it on the cars, and support it.
Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Going a second time? All right, so that is the presentation, um, from our citizens. Uh, now we, it is time for council conversation, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein.
First, about all that stuff that went on up here where you can't have a second after or I run my ship this way, and you can't talk directly to a council person about a private matter. Well, four years ago, this mayor sat here and let a whole group of people come in here and on a very private matter attacked me for about 20 minutes. So I think it's kind of who you are. Depends on who you are coming up here. You the kind of voice I want to hear? Maybe not. I'll tell you something else about how this all started. Not one cop was contacted about this before it was advocated for. It was a low blow. It was a hit below the belt. It was a march in and rule, and I think that's the attitude difference up here. You got some people who rule you. We are going to rule you. And you have other people up here who are going to listen to you, who are gonna, who are gonna come by and have coffee with you, who are gonna hear what you have to say. There are people up here who say, my ward, this project in my ward, the people don't want it, and so I cannot support it. In that instance, it's all about numbers, the numbers of people, right? They don't want this little development, so I'm not going to support it. When the majority of the people of Waterloo come forward and say, we don't want it, totally ignored, totally ignored. It's because you don't have the right message, people. You are defending a noble, but, a noble group that is under attack. They're under attack nationwide. Now, the better way to have handled all this, which would not have split Waterloo, would have been for our leader to go to the police perhaps and say, we've had the patch a long, long time. How do you guys feel about a refreshment? Why weren't you brought in in the beginning? Why weren't you included all the way through it? As far as that committee goes, I, I believe personally that was a sham. We had a woman actively promoting for patches that she did not disclose her husband designed. We had people who are currently on the force on that committee. How free do you think they were to talk? The promotions for them are in other people's hands. How hard could they defend? I just, I just think people, I've walked this whole city, and I want to answer to that lady on the, on the Zoom who said, you know, my people, my people, my people. Well, they're my people too. Everyone in this room is my people. Stop with these lines of differences. Stop it. Not one person at a house in any neighborhood in this city said to me, I want to get rid of the Griffin. Not one. Not one. And I don't care what color that person was. They wanted to talk about their feelings. They wanted to talk about crime. They wanted, a lot of people wanted to talk about crime, but guess what? This council hasn't even had a work session on it. How many people have to die? We had a bloodbath at that after-hours party where these beleaguered officers had to wade through blood all over the floor. We expect them to be there then. If our houses are broken into, we expect them to be there then. They are leaving in droves because we have broken their hearts. Disrespect all over this thing. Someone marched in here several months ago with a big club smeared with racism, and they started swinging it. And anyone who had the temerity to say, you're wrong, got hit with that club. Shame on us. Shame on us. You're going to go down in defeat. You know that. I know that. And I find it heartbreaking.
Mr. Mayor.
You done, Mrs. Klein?
I am, for now.
Okay. So I've lived in this city for a number of years. I've had multiple conversations with lots of people on the sides of the issue, and I can honestly tell you, and some of you won't believe me, and that's perfectly fine, the people that I've talked to, it's split. And I've had about 300, 310 phone calls, conversations about this issue, and it, it's about evenly split. Um, I, I think it's, it's interesting that when we are labeled one of the worst cities for African-Americans to live in, in the nation, and that means dealing with the systemic issues that support that racism, because I fully agree that there aren't people going around and burning crosses in yards. I, I don't believe that, but there are systemic issues, like the fact that there were, up until not terribly long ago, within living memory, neighborhoods where you could not sell to African-American people. We have, like many cities, had to grapple with the issue of policing.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grayder is totally being disrespected by the conversations going on in the room. We have.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I think everyone up here is receiving the respect they are due.
So listen, listen, listen. Just let me, let me say this. Don't get sidetracked. If you have a message to give out, just give your message. Don't get sidetracked.
So we, as a nation, are grappling with a real and fundamental issue that is embedded within us, which is the issue of race. Waterloo resident Nicole Hannah Jones writes about this issue in her projects, and it is a real issue. It is a real issue that 12% of the population of this city is African-American, but 25% of the people who go to jail are African-American. It says something when the unemployment rate in this city for people who look like me is 3.6%, but for African-Americans, it's 24.7%. We have to grapple with these issues, and we have to look at all of them. And I understand that that is uncomfortable because for far too long, we haven't grappled with it. And we have to, because this city should work for everyone. I heard it from a lot of people that they did not like the new patch that was selected by the committee because they thought that some people thought it was, could be offensive. And if you don't want a patch that's offensive or potentially controversial, I understand that, I get that. But why should anyone else live in a city where a patch that they find that makes them uncomfortable? If it's, if that feeling that you shouldn't have to live under a patch that doesn't make you feel comfortable, I get that, but why is that not due to everyone? Why is that not due to people who talk very real about their pain? And I get that there is pain all across the board on this issue, but we have to grapple with it. And it's not racism to talk about the issues facing our community when there are divides within it. It's divisive because we have, for too long, papered over the problem in the hopes that it will go away, and it, and it simply won't. It simply won't go away. Now, I know that some people have labeled me anti-police. That's, that's perfectly fine, they're well within their rights to do that. But I voted for every budget to give police what they need. Some of us up here who are wrapping themselves up in this patch haven't done that. I voted to make sure that the police have the top-of-the-notch equipment, the top-of-the- notch vehicles that they need to do their job. Some of us up here haven't done that. Now, I get that I have upset people, and I will likely upset people with this vote about this patch. But if pro-police means the patch, but it doesn't mean making sure that there's a budget to not have enough cops on the beat, to have enough cars on the street, have enough investigators doing the job they need to do, then that is what it is. But I feel that I have always stood behind what I have felt is right. And if I don't win reelection, then I don't win reelection. But I've always done what I have felt is right for all of the citizens, and I've always done what's right to make sure that our city departments, all of our city departments, have enough people, have enough equipment to do their job. And not everyone up here can say that with a straight face and actually mean it. So I support this resolution. I support continuing to grapple with this issue, and that is my piece.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. I, I've worked 34 years in public safety, and 17 months after that, supporting public safety, and every vote that I've made on this council. And, uh, I've had officers on the police department, uh, say that I don't support the PD. Not at one time in my position on the council have I not supported the PD. When I asked those officers, give me an example of when I haven't supported the PD, they couldn't. But through the grapevine, I find out that I didn't support the PD because I voted for Mrs. Juwan's amendment to Mr. Grayder's resolution to absolve the Griffin. Keep in mind that had I not voted for that resolution, had I worked against that resolution, the Griffin would have been gone in August of last year. Plain and simple. Because based on the conversations at this table, it was going to be a five-to-two vote to abolish the Griffin at that time. I couldn't figure out where, where these officers kept thinking that I was anti-police because of that. And, and then I, you know, I attended every rebranding committee meeting. I spoke at the meetings, probably spoke too much because I was told I was speaking too much. But, but keep in mind that at every meeting, it was stated, if it was stated once, it was stated twice, that it was a seven-to-zero vote, it was unanimous vote to ban the Griffin. Nothing could be farther from the truth. It was unanimous vote to form this rebranding committee to try to come up with a compromise, a compromise that I truly believe that we didn't come up with because it was dysfunctional and a difficult committee to be on at best. Both, and I, and I don't, I don't blame either side. Both sides were dug in on their issues, they were dug in on their beliefs, and I don't really truly believe that, that we really truly worked for compromise. I mean, it was a frustrating process to sit on that committee. Now, two designs were submitted. We have a new one tonight, but the two designs that were submitted, I was, uh, it got brought up because at, at one of the meetings, I had, I, I brought up the resemblance to the war eagle on those two designs. And I was quoted in the paper that that, I felt that it resembled the Nazi symbol. That, again, it couldn't be farther from the truth. What I said at that committee meeting is that I had an advertising executive contact me and felt, and sent me both pictures of, of them, and felt that some people's perception could see that and wanted that brought forward. And, and I brought it forward. It got, it got brought again at our last meeting by another member. I was, I was told, uh, it got brought up at that meeting, and I was told that, uh, when two people that brought that up were uneducated males, and we weren't listening to the educated female on the committee. But it, I don't care if you have a PhD in Holocaust studies, if you have a PhD in, 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 uh, the Nazi war system, it doesn't make any difference to me either way because all it is is perception. A small group of people had a perception that this might resemble something else. No different than a small group of people had a perception that the Griffin resembles a KKK symbol. And I, I wore that patch, I was proud of that patch, I was proud to work for the police department, and it couldn't be, again, it couldn't be farther from the truth. Uh, I, I don't support this. I, I, I was on the committee, I, I did my best to, to represent the men and women of the Waterloo Police Department, and I truly believe that it's kind of a futile effort tonight, but I am not going to vote to, uh, to approve that emblem and the new patch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Good voice.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thanks, Mr. Bozen and Mrs. Juwan, for doing, uh, a very difficult task, and he, I, I, I agree, it probably wasn't going to come to fruition on, on a, on a, on a, on a design, um, just because of that. I too have been labeled anti-police. I have also, like, the majority of us up here have supported each and every time that our, the police chief or major libel brought something up in the almost two and a half years that I've been on council to support our police officers. I, I get it that, you know, we spoke before about the, the patch, and, and I understand. I won't ever be able to, I, I won't, I'm not going to be a police officer. You know, I have my chosen profession, they chose theirs, um, and, and I completely understand, you know? But we also have to understand that sometimes things need to change, and it helps heal, and we've seen that. I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Mosley coming up, um, and discussing about, uh, the, the, the reform pieces of it, and there was another speaker. I apologize, I don't, I don't have it right here at the moment, but that, that spoke about the reform piece, and I think maybe that needs to happen as well in some aspect. I mean, if we're talking about making things better for everybody, we're, we're, we need to look at that and examine that, and perhaps that's where the money should go, because that's what's happening in a lot of cities. I'm not going to propose it. I, I don't necessarily believe that needs to happen. I don't necessarily believe that needs to happen, but that's where this could go. I mean, we talk about councils, we talk about votes, we talk about all of this stuff. Right now, we're talking about a patch. It's very, it's something that, yes, we've had officers die. We've had officers that continue to live. We have officers back there that are standing there, that are supporting their brothers and sisters in the police force. Whether it's this patch, or the next patch, or the next patch that happens in 50 years. We have to have strong people there. We also have to look at and say, are we making the right decisions for everybody? You know, it might be a small minority of people that are speaking up, but that's happened over history and time, and that is how we affect change. I am going to support this motion, though.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Back in June of 2020, I had written up a several-page document. I also submitted a guest editorial to The Courier entitled "Trouble Every Day", and it's taken from some song that Frank Zappa wrote back in 1965. And it was in reference to the trouble that was occurring in race relations in the country at that time. And when I listened to that song, it was so reminiscent of what was going on and continues to go on with our brothers and sisters who have darker skin than me, and it disgusts me. And when I have heard, and contrary to one of my council people who says it's an outright lie, but when I have heard not only African-American, but Caucasian people within the community say that some officers unnamed have referred to that design on the police car as the green-eyed N-word eater, that was it. That just ended it. That had to go. And when I found out the history, that this had been brought up for decades to mayors and to prior people involved with decision-making, and nothing was done, this had to go. In the talk, or the, what I had said in early June about, in my "Trouble Every Day" comments, was a call to the city council to do 12 things. And it included changing this Griffin, finally changing this Griffin, not because it was disrespectful to you police officers, but because it was disrespectful to members of our community that are minority. I represent not only all you, I represent minorities. And minorities need a say in the city of Waterloo, and they haven't got that. There's nothing wrong with bringing up 12 points that this city council should be discussing. Why do you elect us? To sit back, to sit on our thumbs and not do anything? Or do you elect us to talk about the difficult things that need to be talked about? And this is one of them. And what we're doing tonight, what we did last August 24th, in no way disrespects anybody. Those who want the Griffin can continue in their personal life to wear that. Nobody's saying it's a taboo, and you're going to be fined or penalized if you wear that. No, what this is saying is that we respect the voices of our minority community who have been dismissed for decades. That's what this does. Along with Mr. Bozen, Mr. Greider, Ms. Klein, and all the other council members, I support public safety. I've been on the council for seven and a half years, and if you want to vote me out, vote me out. I've had ward meetings. I've sat there, and I've listened to people that wanted to show up at my ward meetings. Granted, I haven't had any since COVID because, quite frankly, I don't want to get COVID. So, I avoided that. I hope I may be able to start those in a couple of months, depending upon what Kent Shankle decides. But those are times when I will listen to the people, but at the same time, I respect our minority community and what they have gone through, and that's what this is all about. This is all about changing that, not disrespecting anybody. As a matter of fact, I'm one of those people that believe that, you know, what came up with here through the WPPA, okay, that's sort of what we were thinking about from the very beginning. The only difference I have, and this is me, I've got long hair. I'm an old peacenik. I'm an old hippie, whatever you want to call me. Call me names, I don't care. Okay? Because I've been called plenty. But what I really would like to see is the background of the Waterloo PP, or the WPPA design be powder blue with dark blue letters. That way, it goes with your dark blue uniform, and it conforms with the whole concept of supporting our men and women in blue. And it definitely is a big contrast, and definitely people would notice it. But I don't know if that would get any support on council or from the public, but it sure is something that I believe because police officers, regardless where they're located, are peace officers. They're there to establish, to maintain, and restore peace where it needs to be restored. I support this resolution. I hope that it gets introduced in its full entirety, Ms. Juin. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me time to talk.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos. Listening to all of my fellow council members, for me, there's not a whole lot that I can say, other than the fact that I had an opportunity to talk with a ex-police official today. And some of the things that he told me, I want to just bring those things forward because apparently there's this mindset that the things that we are doing up here is because we are anti-police. That is the furthest thing from the truth. We are here trying to make these changes to help this community that I live in. People talk about their grandkids. I have grandkids in this community also. And you know what? I don't want to see them growing up the way that I grew up. I just don't want to see it. It's just that simple. So, the fact that individuals are looking at this like we are against the police department, we are anti-police, anyone that knows me knows that that's not the truth. And I know a lot of other members in this community, that is just simply not accurate. So, please, please, I'm pretty sure that this is going to make some changes in our community. And in the long run, there will be things that will be better for this community. As far as disrespecting those officers who have worn that patch by changing it, no way. That is not what is going to take place. I know many officers, I've worked with the police department, I've worked with the sheriff's department, and I can tell you that those things and those feelings that you are having are not accurate feelings. So, please, step back. Take a look at the big picture, because it is a big picture. And just try and look at it from a standpoint. I hear stepping out of your shoes or stepping into someone else's shoes. Well, don't even do that. You don't have to do that. Just look at what is going on and address it from that standpoint. That's pretty much all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, council. So, you know, I just... This process has really been enlightening for, you know, a few different reasons. And I can only imagine, if the mayor had actually cast a vote that day, what people would do to me. The threats, the overtones. It's just been really interesting to see. And it goes all the way around, right? But when someone gets up here who I've worked with and states, you know, mayor and council has not worked with the police department, that kind of bothers me. Number one, our former chief, who's sitting in the audience, when I first got elected, asked me to speak at the police officers memorial, peace officers. And I talked about the incredible job that our police department was doing. Whether or not people want to admit that or not, that's what happened. When I had my second or third year on council, a former police officer asked me to be mayor pro tem. Whether that person wants to speak up about that relationship or not, it's up to him. Former mayor in office, we found out that there were things going on in our community where we needed more officers on the street. And there was a veto that came by the mayor. We stepped out, and a couple of council members overturned that, which led to V-CAD and hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in to be able to support. And to this day, hundreds of guns and drugs and things taking off the street. We created overlay districts because we were overproliferated with calls within the police department, and we needed to do something from a council perspective. The police department budget, since I've been mayor, working with some of these council members, have increased close to 20% with over $2.2 million being invested into capital expenditures. I've stood in the park in the middle of the night fighting and saying, "Give our police department a chance. We're willing to work. We're going to bridge that gap", while other people talk about it. I was out there supporting our police department. Prior to starting, prior to starting becoming mayor, relationships were very fractured. Millions of dollars being spent in lawsuits. 97% of that has decreased by the efforts and partnerships from the mayor, the council, and the police department. That's been a change. Helped to raise over $250,000 at the beginning of it with a private-public partnership with a local businessman. He asked, "Where should the funding go?" To the police department, so we can work together and collaborate, and we can make sure they have all the training they needed. That happened. So, I'm not fair-weather with regards to supporting the police department. I can't imagine what would happen, like I said, if I actually had a vote. But, look, another issue. How many people in here have heard of public safety models? Anybody heard of that? No one heard about that? Collaborating and bringing police and fire together? I stood up and said, "Hell, no. That won't happen in here", to another council member and other council members that were trying to do that to our police and fire departments. So, when it comes to supporting, you know, I kind of see both sides of the issue. This is, I think someone said that coming up here, this has been really a polarizing situation. You know, different people, different perspectives on how they feel about the situation. I wholeheartedly agree. It absolutely, it absolutely is. But to get up here, when we've worked together and state that there's no support by the mayor's office for the police department? Come on now. That's playing, that's playing to that politics. So, we have a vote tonight. Mrs. Juin has put the amendment on. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, could the resolution be read as we are going to vote on?
Oops.
I think you still have it.
I got it.
Because, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking, I'm asking that because I have a couple of questions.
It says, "Resolution to receive, place on file, and adopt the design recommendations submitted by the Police Rebranding Committee, designed to be affixed to the vehicle graphics, uniforms, letterhead, and police department objects, with the exception of weapons and revolvers. The mayor will be responsible for the implementation of this resolution as soon as is practical, including addressing the schedule for police weapons/revolvers."
Madam Clerk, roll call. Mr. Morrissey.
A couple of questions I had was, when it says that you'll be responsible for the implementation, is that pending the new fiscal year on July 1st? After that? And is the financing of that, I believe I read a memo that Chief Financial Officer Weidner had stated how that was going to be funded in this coming year, several months. And then, the third thing is that I just would ask, because I believe that the most visible thing that people see without anybody stopping is the vehicle. And I was just hoping that the vehicle and the change on that would occur first, Mr. Mayor. So, the funding is taken.
There's a lot of dynamics in that that I need to weed through. This amendment was passed tonight, so I need to kind of like weed through it. Because we may have to order shirts, and then we may have to figure out how much the wraps are going to be. So, it's a couple of different moving parts. But how about at some point, we get a schedule with the proper steps of working with the PD to try to make these things happen?
Okay. And pending approval of this, I'm just wanting to make sure from Chief Financial Officer Michelle Weidner that the money is there to do this. That's, I just wanted that question specifically answered.
If you guys say it needs to be there, it's going to be there. But, Mrs. Weidner.
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer. I can't necessarily make money out of thin air, but I did identify some, oops, I think we lost the mic, maybe. I did identify earnings on funds that are available because they haven't been allocated to a project yet. So, they're not coming out of the operating budgets, which would increase the tax levy. They are not increasing the debt service levy because it's interest on that. So, that seems, that's the best compromise that I could come up with for you to do that. And that only works because these are capital items. So, you know, we can't use that to increase staffing or other things that we might like to do. We are choosing to prioritize that project over other capital projects. That is true. We are doing that. But that was the compromise that I located.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
No.
Thank you. Could someone take 9, 10, and 11, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the following resolutions. Number 9, resolution approving an addendum to the NJPA program agreement with the WEX Bank for fuel cards for the Tri-County Task Force, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to execute said document. Number 10 is approving of a resolution establishing incentive plan for accessible, affordable childcare in Waterloo. And number 11 is approving a resolution approving a supplemental agreement for professional services agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, originally executed February 1st, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $5,325 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2020 Courtland-Jefferson and Mulberry Street Reconstruction Program, contract number 1015, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second. Is anyone in the audience with questions on 9, 10, or 11?
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. This is on number 10. Again, it's, to me, it's part of this picking winners and losers that I've expressed before. The president was on TV tonight talking about expanding childcare tax credits. I think this is something that should be left up to states and the federal government to assist these people in childcare. assist these people in childcare. Uh, why are we in any business? And if we give money to any business person, uh, as a grant or, or tax abatement or whatever we give them, uh, we're, we're in that business. The city of Waterloo should not be in a business of any sort. Uh, we own no shares. We get no benefits from it. But yet, we're giving them money to develop a business, to expand their business, whatever. I was in business for 13 years in Parkersburg. It wasn't successful. But my money went into it. I didn't get any help from the city, the state, the federal government. So why are we, you, deciding to go ahead and promote any, any particular business? Where are you going to stop? Uh, we, we should be giving money to a lot of different places then, to everybody. Because, because we've got the money? No, we don't. Uh, this giveaway needs to stop. We keep promoting businesses that are this or that or childcare. Yes, people need help with their childcare. The government's looking at that right now. Don't let us have to stick, stick our money into it as well. That's not fair to the citizens of Waterloo whose tax, taxes keep going up all the time.
All right, thank you. Um, council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Um, Greider.
Yeah. So I'd like to talk about number 10. Um, so, uh, the gentleman who spoke is correct that the federal government is looking at providing supports, as is the state. Um, however, the childcare tax credits that the federal government is looking at extending is money that is given to parents to pay for childcare, um, at cost. The thing that the state is looking for is also looking for extending a slider on, um, childcare tax credits that are given by the state out of our tax code. This is different. Um, because those address the demand side of the problem, but we all know basic economics says that there's also a supply problem. Um, I have talked with Gross Cedar Valley. I have talked with, uh, Childcare Resource and Referral of Northeast Iowa. I've talked to business owners. One of the biggest barriers, the biggest barriers facing our economy as we come out of the COVID-19 year is finding workers. We hear it all the time. We hear it all the time. And other policymakers above me have made choices about that, and that is perfectly within their purview. But the number one issue that I am hearing from business owners, from my constituents, because I listen to my constituents, is that they do not have access to affordable, accessible, safe childcare. And so this resolution would charge our planning and development department, who are the experts on, on those incentives, and childcare resource and referral of Northeast Iowa, who are experts on, I believe, our most important investment, which is our children, which will have untold bountiful impacts on this community well after everyone at this table in this room is gone. I believe that that's an investment worth making. And so what we are going to do, what we are charging with this resolution is to have them come up with a plan to help small business owners, entrepreneurs, get their feet on the ground. Entrepreneurs who are overwhelmingly, nine out of 10 are women, and four out of 10 are women of color. We are offering them an access, an avenue point into building a business, into helping families go back to work, and most importantly to me, and I think a lot of people, in helping our children grow so that Waterloo is far better than it was when any of us came up here. So I don't think this is picking winners and losers. I think it's investing in our community because we are investing in children. Um, now, in terms of the transparency, because we hear that a lot, here is what my vision is, and, and Mr. Anderson, if, if you disagree, you can let me know. I would like this to come before us as a, as a work session when you come up with whatever the final plan is. And then just like any other incentive, each individual time that we offer this incentive, the council will have to vote on it. We will have discussion on it. We will look at the plans, uh, and we will decide whether or not that project is worthy of going forward. And then I've also written in this resolution that every single year, every single year while this program exists, that we will get a presentation from planning and zoning and development about if we are meeting our goal of closing the childcare seat gap. And if we are making progress, I am more than happy because this isn't about glory. This is about my name. This is about helping children. If the program isn't working, we'll fix it. If we can't fix it, I'll be the first vote to scrap it. But I want us to try to solve the problems that are impacting my constituents. And this is one of them. And I believe as a father, that investing in our children is always, always worth the investment. And others may disagree with that, but I believe that children are absolutely worth it every single time.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bowzen?
Thank you, sir. And, and I, I support this resolution. I had, I was apprehensive, Mr. Greider, because it's open-ended. And I, I can't, you know, I wasn't willing to support an open-ended resolution. So I, I agree with what Mr. Greider said. It needs to come back on a work session. It needs to come back before the city council. And I would like to see specific guidelines. What I don't want to see is individual development agreements that change from development agreement to development agreement because that's what we see all of the time.
I agree.
And, and, and you've got to wade through 23 sheets of, or, or pages to find all the discrepancies in the individual development agreements. So if this can come back before the council in a work session, if, if, uh, planning and development can put together the incentive plans that, that, that is equal across the board for each and every, uh, uh, application, I wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Greider, I would ask for just a friendly amendment that would speak to what you're talking about. I've, I, 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 uh, go along with what you're talking about here, but i- in your actual, uh, resolution, number one and number two, I'd like to see at the, after the phrase, the Community Planning and Development Department shall develop an incentive package. And then a number two, the Community Planning and Development Department shall develop an incentive package. After tho- those two, number one and number two, those phrases, I would like to add, subject to approval of council.
I'm perfectly fine with that amendment, but I'll defer to our parliamentarian on if, if we need to have a vote, if I'm fine with it.
I would, I need to pull up the resolution quick. And I'm going to need you to restate that, uh, those motions.
Sure.
But I would, since we're changing the text of the resolution, the council needs to vote that up or down.
But I will, I will.
Let me just find that quick.
Mr. Morrissey's motion.
Thank you.
Okay. I will note that. Okay. So you, the first one is in section two, Mr. Morrissey. Is that correct?
It, it, it would be in the, uh, first, uh, numeral one.
Okay.
The Community Planning and Development Department shall develop an incentive package. And then the amendment would be adding the language at the end of that, subject to approval of council.
And you meaning that's at the end of the, the, at the end of the sentence?
No, it's at the after the word package in number one.
After the word package.
And then the after, the subject to approval of council, it would continue on with the rest of the, uh, number one, which is one big, long sentence.
Okay. So after the word package, insert subject to approval of council.
Yes. Followed by the rest of the sentence. And then in number two, that's, that same wording, uh, which is the Community Planning and Development Department shall develop an incentive package. And then with that phrase again, subject to approval of council. And then the rest of the sentence. Very long sentence, Mr. Greider, or Councilman Greider.
Experts told me that was the language.
Okay. Okay. I, I think I got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Uh, questions about the amendment? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. June?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Now, nine, 10, 11, with the amendment added. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. June?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. 12, 13, and 14.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving renewal agreement with Malmark BlueCross Blue Shield for fees associated with administration network access and stop loss and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. 13 is a resolution approving a renewal agreement with Delta Dental for fees associated with administration and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And 14 is a resolution approving renewal agreement with National Insurance Services for fees associated with life and long-term disability policies and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right. Any questions on 12, 13, and 14? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. June?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, 16, 17, and 18.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolution. 16 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $5,000 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Lake Street Rise Project, contract number 1051, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. We didn't do 15, did we?
That was a move.
Oh, we removed that. Excuse me. Sorry for the wrong.
Number 17 is a resolution approving an access agreement to city-owned property for the purposes of Mid-American Energy installing a monitoring well on city-owned property required as part of the assessment and cleanup of the Waterloo coal gas site being conducted under the oversight of the United States Environmental Protection Agency and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And 18 is a resolution approving amendment to the professional services contract with HR Green, Inc. for environmental work at 120 Center Street to raise the maximum limit of work to $12,450 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Check it. All right. The motion has been made with a second. Question on 16, 17, and 18?
I have a question, sir.
Mr. Bowzen?
I have a question on 18. And it, and it's, I'm really concerned about 18 because when this development agreement came before the council, I questioned why we were agreeing to pay for the cleanup. And I was told at that time that we felt that we had some brownfields money. We'd get some, something from the DNR, and it wasn't going to be that much. And now we've increased the contract for, for, uh, HR Green to try to come up with a solution to, to find an economical way to clean this up. And we were comparing it with similar sites in Colorado that cost $600,000 to $900,000 to clean up. And we're on the hook now to clean this up. So I, I, I hope and pray that they can come up with a solution that's gonna not, not be the, the higher end of this, this project because I would, I would have just assumed that's, have that project or that, that property sit vacant until we came up with some federal money to clean it up in the past before we would take on the, the, the idea that, that the city's going to pay for the, the site cleanup. And that's all I have, sir.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, any comment on 18?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Councilman Bowzen's exactly correct. We're, we're, I'm experiencing some issues with the high pH level out there so that the landfill would not take it. Um, we've been working with HR Green, um, and through our grant as well. Um, we'll, we'll continue to look at the options. Right now, we're looking at the, uh, possibility of making a land application, um, which has done with some materials from that site in the past. So we're doing some chemical analysis of it right now to look at that. Uh, if that does not come back favorable, and we are looking at higher costs, then we'll obviously have to pause, uh, moving ahead with the cleanup and, and look for some federal funds, as he noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes. Uh, in regards to number 17, um, I just wondering, looking at the map and where this will happen, will this result, uh, in the closure of the north side, uh, rec trail along the, uh, north side of the river?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Jamie shaking his head no. Um, and I know he's been working with him on, on the proximity to that, uh, for the lift station and all the other utilities, but, um, it won't affect the bike trail.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. June?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. 19, 20, and 21, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion adopting the following resolutions. First is resolution approving the request for Waterloo Veterans Memorial Hall Commission to rename Cedar Street from West Ford Street to West Fifth Street to Corbot Court. Next is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Development and Minimum Assessment Agreement with Warren Transport, Inc., originally executed on November 18th, 2019, changing the completion date to November 30th, 2022, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And, uh, finally, it's a resolution authorizing an exception to the city Waterloo's purchasing procedures policy to approve the purchase of a rental 2020 Elgin Crosswind Single Engine Sweeper in the amount of $259,195 from McCree Equipment of Ankeny, Iowa.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we have, uh, anyone, uh, in the audience that would like to speak to, uh, any of these three items? Uh, council? Yes, sir. I was trying to wait and see if you came up or not, but.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Department Heads, my name's Randy Miller. I reside at 4408 Reflection Lane in Waterloo. I'm, um, a member of the Waterloo Veterans Memorial Hall Commission. Uh, we voted unanimously at the last meeting to encourage the adoption and renaming of Cedar Street, which is between Fourth Street and Fifth Street, just in front of Memorial Hall, in honor of, um, a young World War II veteran who deceased just recently. She was 98 years old. She dedicated at least one-fourth of her life to Memorial Hall being on that commission. Um, she was such a dedicated and passionate person for veterans and our community as a whole. Um, we recognize that, uh, what she did over there as far as fundraising, she was our treasurer since 1997. She was the head of fundraising. We have a brickway, walkway that's an honor for all the veterans in the community. She was the head of that fundraising, raising about $150,000. And that funded the renewal of the whole Soldiers' and Sailors Park. It was, um, she was instrumental in so many things besides the scope, outside of that, she was the head of all the cemeteries in Waterloo Memorial Day weekend, getting it organized to get flags at each and every grave site of a veteran that served our community. Uh, she was just a, a lovely, lovely Kenwood spirit soul. I don't even know if I got enough words to put it in the right perspective. But again, I encourage you to, um, do this. It doesn't influence any other buildings. It's just Memorial Hall. Uh, and I appreciate working with Eric. And, um, so again, I've said my piece. Thank you.
I don't, I, I don't know what else you could have said.
Good job.
Good job.
Yes.
All right, council. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. June?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, 22 through 24, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 22 is a resolution renaming the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center to the Waterloo Convention Center and naming the outside plaza area the Sullivan Brothers Plaza and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents for such change. Number 23 is a resolution approving development agreement with Crystal Distribution Services, Inc., and the city of Waterloo for a new 100,000-square-foot cold storage facility with a minimum assessment agreement adding $10 million to the current assessed value of the site. And city incentives of acquiring land, buildings on campus, and tax rebates of 10 years at 70%. And authorizing the mayor and city of 10 years at 70% and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And finally, number twenty-four is a resolution approving an encroachment agreement with Hawkeye Community College to install 42-inch high fencing and bollards on city-owned right-of-way along West First Street in the C3 Central Business District at 120 Jefferson Street.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, let Mr. Greider come up. I apologize.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I want to talk about number twenty-two, and I'm not sure what I pulled up, but it was off of number fifteen, which you have delayed. But I don't know any of the Sullivan family, and I did not grow up in Waterloo. I don't think that you seven people should decide this renaming, no matter whether you have had conversations with the family. This should be the decision of the majority of the Waterloo citizens who have lived here all their life. There is an election in November, so put this on the ballot and see what comes out. And I'll add this, because this was kind of pertinent, the same as the past, but that's already past, so that's past kind of. For sure, the manager, who we've hired to manage the facility, should not have future name change ability by just talking to a mayor. We keep putting dollars in the civic center, so who should be deciding the center's name? I feel the citizens of Waterloo should be deciding that, not somebody that, and according to this, they get future naming rights? That's not right. The citizens of Waterloo own that facility. They don't. So why are you seven people deciding to change the name of it? That's up to the citizens of Waterloo. I think they want to keep the name Five Sullivan Brothers. And I didn't grow up here.
Who is "they"? If it's the citizens of Waterloo, that's why we're calling it the Waterloo Convention Center. And I've had conversations with the Sullivan's. I've had conversations with the Grouse Museum. Oh, you're done. I've had conversations about this. And secondly, this project is going to highlight the unity, diversity, and togetherness of Waterloo. This is going to be one of the most best projects we've ever had to talk about service, dedication to honor veterans in this community. That's what this project is about. I mean, if you'd asked me, or asked me, I would have told you that, but that's what this project is about. It's not about just me or the council. This is about community.
But the community is not getting input.
You're done. You're done.
The community is not getting input.
You're done.
I might be done, but you're done too. Okay? Thank you.
Is that a threat? Are you threatening my life?
It's not.
Is that a threat? What do you mean, I'm done?
Speaking.
Mr. Dryer, I'm gonna tell you like this. Because we disagree on issues, that gives you no right to talk to me like that. Period.
Put it to me, sir.
You got your three minutes, and you are done. Don't ever threaten me again. Never in your life, don't ever threaten me again, sir. It was, just said it on television. Don't threaten me again. That's the way I took it. All right. Counsel, any other comments? Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, with regards to number twenty-three, could, I'm just wondering exactly what this means. I'm wondering if the administration building is involved in this. Could that be explained, number twenty-three?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. As many of you are aware, since the 1980s, the City of Waterloo has been working to redevelop the Rath Administration Packing Plant area. Crystal has been a large part of that redevelopment. So we're continuing to partner with them toward their expansions. They've done expansions in 1999, 2013, and 2017. I'm going to have really created over 100 new jobs into that area over those years. This latest expansion that they're proposing would be 100,000 square feet. That would be the size of their last two expansions in 99 and 2017, which were full expansions. They are proposing to hire another 70 people. What we are working on is acquiring the older multi-story buildings. They are no longer able to continue to operate in them because of the maintenance required. The elevators keep failing, and the stacking and height distance in there isn't very conducive to warehousing. Depending upon how the council wants to move ahead, this is similar to what we did with Crystal's last expansion when we bought their site at Mullen and the River. We'll continue to let them to operate in there for up to five years, and then we will make our decisions on what we want to do moving ahead. Obviously, if redevelopment occurs, we can look for developers for that space. If we demolish it, we would open up about another five acres of land in that area where Crystal could potentially expand again. So again, this is kind of a continuing partnership for the redevelopment of that area.
Madam Mayor, pro temp.
Yes. Mr. Morrissey, other questions?
Yeah. Mr. Anderson, does this in any way affect the administration building? Because that is really, really deteriorating.
Obviously, the administration building is right across the street on Sycamore. We continue to have a development group out of Denver, Colorado, that's looking at numbers on that right now. We hope to have some answers on that in the next couple of months. If that were not able to be redeveloped, demolition would, you know, be another potential for that site as well, and that would open up another two acres. We are applying for some RISE funds to help us with the 11th Street Bridge with these projects occurring here. The DOT has asked us to go ahead and submit for that funding source. So again, we're hoping to kind of tie all these things together to redevelop this area.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I have a number of questions for Mr. Anderson. Who owned the Rath Building before Crystal moved in?
The City of Waterloo.
And how much did we sell the Rath Building to Crystal for?
I know they bid it on auction. I don't have that number right in front of me. I apologize. I can definitely get that to you, but they bought it on auction for, I believe it was over $100,000.
But we're willing to buy it back from them for 2.9 million?
They had an appraisal done on the buildings, and obviously, there is a potential for possibly non-industrial redevelopment of the buildings, which we would look at, but that was what the appraisal came back at.
But again, we're going to buy it for 2.9. We're going to lease it back to them for a dollar a year for up to five years for them to occupy. So we won't be even in that realm of redeveloping for five years. And then at that point in time, we're going to have to come up with funding to tear that six-story building down, correct?
We've set up the, that is correct. We've set up the five-year timeframe just because it was kind of how we did things in a previous project, and it worked out well. I think they got out of those buildings in about four and a half years. Obviously, they do have some material stored in these buildings, so they'll be building their new building, which will take them about a year. And then they'll be moving materials out of there as they can into their new building. Because again, they have a number of clients that will not be in the older buildings anymore, moving to the future. But we can definitely, if we had a prospect or something like that, we would definitely work with Crystal to get them out of there sooner if there was an opportunity.
Prior to the sale of 2.9 million for this six-story building, or five-story, have we done an environmental study? Has that been done of that facility so that we're not going to end up with something like the Cleveland Welding Site where we're on the hook five years from now to abate asbestos, to clean environmental impacts, to, if we're going to tear this thing down and then we end up having to stick another $2 million into it, I think it's going to cost us close to $2 million to tear it down. We're going to have $5 million into this project, and if we have an environmental issue that comes up, that potentially could go higher. But my question is, is have we done that? Or are we planning on doing that prior to the purchase price of that facility?
Yeah, there's some wording in there about we'll be doing environmental testing and all that as we're going through this process. If this is approved, then we're approved to go ahead and send our staff or consultants in there to start the environmental testing. Obviously, we've done a number of other buildings in that area and haven't found anything too difficult to clean up, but we are close to that Superfund Site that was talked about for the monitoring well. That is a budding to the southeast, or southwest, I'm sorry. But obviously, there is a responsible party for the Superfund Site in Mid-America versus the sites that we're buying. There's really no responsible parties for us being the previous owner, the Rath Packing Plant Company being bankrupt, and Crystal obviously didn't do anything underground or anything as part of their operation of the buildings.
Correct, but I'm just as concerned with asbestos.
Our reports are that they've removed all the asbestos out of the buildings, and we've asked for those reports.
Have you received them?
We have not yet, no.
Okay. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
On all three?
On all three?
On all three.
On the one with the coal storage. Twenty-three. And yes on the other two.
Thank you. Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on twenty-two and twenty-four. No on twenty-three.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I'd like to take a brief recess.
All right. Can we?
Two minutes, three minutes, whatever.
Five minutes?
Sure.
Second.
All right. Motion been made with second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five minutes.
When this comes up on the fireworks, how do we bring that?
Second.
Motion being made with second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, reconvene. Number twenty-five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending subsections one and two of section G enforcement of section thirteen fireworks, chapter two, general provisions, title five, police regulations.
Second.
And motion's been made with the second. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make an amendment to this based on information from Mr. Peterson who would like it to read just slightly different to clarify it. And Ms. Felkley will read the amendment as Mr. Peterson has proposed.
Okay. The amendment is to subsection one of section G. And it reads, "This section thirteen shall be enforced by any employee having the authority to document violations and issue citations for municipal infractions, and said officers or employees shall also respond to related nuisance calls."
Second.
All right.
Kelly, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Could you please repeat that?
Sure. So for the whole subsection one of section G, "This section thirteen shall be enforced by any employee having the authority to document violations and issue citations for municipal infractions, and said officers or employees shall also respond to related nuisance calls."
Is that good, Mr. Morrissey?
Okay, so. And said employees shall also. What follows that?
Yep, and said officers or employees.
So it adds back in officers.
Yep, "shall also respond to related nuisance calls."
Okay. Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on Mr. Bozen's amendment. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I don't, who is, who are these employees who are having authority to document violations and issue citations? Who are they? What departments are they in? What are their titles, job positions?
Is Mr. Peterson out there?
Yes, I mean, I'm. The language I proposed, I think, was to clarify the intent Mr. Bozen had in mind. And he spoke to that, I believe, at the work session. I think the main folks that are going to be impacted would be code enforcement, and they derive their authority for enforcement from various parts of our city code. I think the one that would intersect with fireworks would be debris or litter from having shot off fireworks if they land where the ordinance prohibits them from landing. And Mr. Bozen can clarify any other thoughts he got on that issue.
Mr. Bozen, other comments to Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, there is a number of city employees that can write municipal infractions, but Mr. Peterson's absolutely correct. It's going to fall more under the umbrella of code enforcement when they're sent out to areas that people make complaints because of fireworks debris. And if they're out there, they should have the opportunity and be allowed to write those citations because we can cite the homeowner if we can't prove who fired off the fireworks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce. Foyce, yes, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Morrissey, are you done? Oh, I apologize.
Well, I have other questions, but.
No, no, no.
I'll defer to.
No, 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 go ahead. I, 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 sorry.
Okay, so, I, I mean, code enforcement or any other employee, they work within hours. They only have one shift. So this language doesn't clarify that they can't be called out after hours. It just says, "Any employee having authority to document violations issue citations." Okay, so that's my concern with this is that does that mean that they get off work at three o'clock, which code enforcement does? Or they get off work at four-thirty or four, whatever time? This language doesn't clarify that they can't be called back into work to issue a citation or violation. That's not clear in this language. And that's a concern I've got. The next concern I got is that many of these employees that we're talking about are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Collective bargain, have any of the bargaining units been contacted about this change in language that affects their duties? Because if they haven't been, they should have been, because it's a collective bargaining issue. That's, I, that's why I object to this kind of language if it, if it hasn't been discussed with the people that it's affected, and if it's not clear language that says exactly what it means is going to happen to employees other than police officers who have three shifts? Or reserve officers who can be called in and doing that? Or if they're going to refer to fire department in any way, shape, or form for doing anything like this that has different shifts? But what about those employees that Councilman Bozen is referring to who have normal work hours, who are in collective bargaining units? I cannot favor this language at all unless it gets clarified and looked at deeper.
So would they have to work outside of their bargain contract?
I don't see that happening, sir. I don't know where that comes from because it's if a code enforcement officer is sent out in their course of their duties because of litter and debris and fireworks debris, that a neighbor called in because all of this stuff is in the yard, they should have the opportunity during their normal hours, seven to three, eight to four-thirty, or whatever it is, to write that citation. And that's all this is doing is dividing up some of that load so that it doesn't have to be fall on the police department. The code enforcement officers should not have to go out there and look at this thing and say, "I need to get an officer out here to write this citation." They should be able to write the citation during their normal hours. I don't, I don't see how this is that complicated. I think we're, we don't have to contact the collective bargaining units of code enforcement to ask them to do their duty if they're called out there to deal with a code enforcement complaint. Plain and simple. That's all, I don't know how else to answer that.
Mr. Mayor? Let me see if Mr. Morrissey's done.
No, I'm not finished because that doesn't answer the question that this language is so unclear and it's not finished. It's poorly worded because it doesn't describe, it doesn't explain exactly what Councilman Bozen said that it's during work hours. It doesn't say that in this language. It could be, you know, if this was to go into effect as an ordinance two years from now, it could be reinterpreted to mean that, well, it doesn't say that we can't call them at eight o'clock at night. It doesn't mean that I can't have a building inspector be called out at eight o'clock tonight. And that language needs to be in here to make this ordinance clear.
You want language added to their contracts?
It needs to be discussed with the collective bargaining units beside that. That's a secondary point. But it's no less important, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I.
We got Mr. Foyce and then we'll come back to you. Thank you. Just with that, now I have a question from, I believe, Mr. Peterson. With the ordinance language and the contract language, which supersedes which? Or maybe Mr. Dunn? Does an ordinance supersede contract language or does the contract language supersede the ordinance?
Well, the only example I can cite use, our traffic code specifically delegates enforcement of parking violations to code enforcement. And it doesn't say anything about their hours. But I guess I'm not troubled by the fact that it doesn't specifically direct work hours because it's obvious to everybody that the code enforcement folks aren't going to get called out at one in the morning. They're going to, they're going to function at their regular hours. Just the traffic, just like the reference, the traffic code delegates authority to them. It doesn't mean that if there's a car illegally parked after hours, that they have to go attend to it. The traffic code also says that, the entire traffic code, it specifically says is enforced by the police department. So I'm not troubled by the fact that it doesn't specifically address their hours of work. We're simply not going to ask them to work enforcing fireworks other than within their regular times of work.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And then with that, then if we, if they were asked to work outside, I believe since they still have, I mean, they still have contract language that deals with grievances and work hours and stuff. Yeah, I mean, we worked really hard to make sure they maintained that. If they had to do that, then they could file a grievance, correct? Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Amos?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's basically what the question or the comment that I had was is is right now with the ordinances that we have that address code enforcement, there's nothing in there that addresses hours of operation work and those things. And to me, that just goes without saying. Unless you're called back into work or something, you're not going to be out there writing tickets and things like that when you're not on the clock. So for me, it's language that, yeah, you could put in there, but is it really necessary? I guess is the way that I'm looking at it.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
The other, I don't know if we're just talking about number one or if we're also talking about number two at the same time. Or was there some changes?
Just the amendment.
We're talking about the amendment.
Okay, so we're just talking about the amendment to number one.
Yes.
We haven't got the full thing. Okay.
Correct.
All right, Madam Clerk, to the amendment.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now the motion, the amendment is added. Mr. Morrissey? Well, Mr. Morrissey?
Well, I don't know if Councilman Bozen had anything that he was going to add as far as an amendment to subsection two.
No, sir.
Of G.
No.
Okay, so what I wanted to bring up here is again my concern that this could be misinterpreted by somebody who was having authority over any of these named people as having authority to document violations and issue citations. And that language in there, "Any person who violates or resists the enforcement of any other provisions of this section shall be guilty of a municipal infraction punishable by a civil penalty of three hundred and seventy-five dollars." My concern there, Mr. Mayor, is what if a code enforcement officer, a building inspector, or somebody else who can issue or has the authority to document violations issue citations says, "I'm not going to do that. That's not part of my job." What it says in this language here, if you extrapolated it out, is that they can be assessed a municipal infraction, be accused of being guilty of violating that, and be fined, which basically probably would lead to their being fired or terminated for violating this municipal infraction as a city employee. That's my concern with this language. Granted, somebody say, "Boy, that's really reaching out there." Well, that's what we're supposed to do, Mr. Mayor. We're supposed to look at the possible consequences of any language that we add to an ordinance. So I would ask that that language be deleted from this subsection two.
Mr. Bozen, anyone comments?
No, I stand by the ordinance, how it's written.
So, Mr. Morrissey, was that a? Was that a?
I'd like to make amendment to remove the language in blue that's been submitted as an amendment to the ordinance and return it to its original form.
Do we have a second?
That's the entire ordinance?
Just the blue.
Or just subsection two?
The subsection.
Okay, thanks.
Subsection two of G.
All right. Mr. Morrissey has a second on that item?
And Mr. Mayor, just again, I just think it speaks for itself what I just said. I think that we as a council need to make sure that if we're passing some language, that it will withstand the test of us leaving council and other people coming on and other employees in charge not misinterpreting. You know, I can understand the table talk we're having right now, but this is 2021. What's to say that it changes and is reinterpreted in 2025 to mean exactly what I said?
All right, thank you. For the amendment by Mr. Morrissey, it has a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
And Mr. Foyce?
No.
All right, thank you. Motion's on the table. Madam Clerk?
Miss.
Mrs. Jewen?
Mr. Morrissey, yes.
Okay, so the motion to approve all of one and two, what's in one and two, is that what is on the table now?
The addition of the amendment that Mr. Bozen made in section one plus section two, your amendment didn't pass.
Okay, so I just have a question that and it's in regards to number three. And being as that we're delineating, who is going to be doing what in one and two? Who is going to be monitoring the vendors of fireworks as outlined in number three? If we're going to be this detailed or we're going to be this specialized in one and two?
Mr. Peterson or Mr. Bozen?
It hasn't changed from the original one. And Chief Fitzgerald, who sent out at our last meeting, his enforcement guidelines that he was going to have his department do, clearly states who's going to monitor this and who's going to go to these fireworks vendors and deal with any issues and educate them on our guidelines and ordinances. And I believe that was going to be Lieutenant Payne. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Is the, what I had requested at the last two meetings, is that the fireworks enforcement operational plan 2021 tentative? Is that, I have it right here in front of me. Is that it?
You got Mr. Bozen and you have the chief.
It's a one-page document.
I don't have the document in hand, but it does resemble that. Upon careful examination of the document, it seems to, it seems to be the document.
Okay, so. Lieutenant Payne will make contact with fireworks sales location, ask them to post flyers and provide copies of the World of Fireworks rules and punishment with every sale. That's not monitoring. That's posting and asking them to comply. But what I take to be monitoring is that there's going to be visits to see if they're living up to what is expected, Chief Fitzgerald.
During conversations with Lieutenant Payne in regards to this, you know, one of the things that came out of our conversations with that, we had to have a more robust contact with the people that were selling the fireworks. So I do anticipate Lieutenant Payne having some type of relationship building with the fireworks vendors to avoid, you know, having problems with them selling the people that they shouldn't and having them become more in compliance with the law.
Mr. Mayor, Chief Fitzgerald, this is written operational period July, or June 1st to July 5th. So that would, by implication, to me at least, say that there is, there should be, if we're going by the language of the ordinance, monitoring during that period.
To answer that question and to expand a little, I mean, yes, it would be monitoring during that period, but just like, you know, any other business owner within the confines of the city, you would have other arms of the city be able to go in in conjunction with the police department to work with those business owners. So it wouldn't just be the police department, obviously. We have other arms within the city to be able to make contact with businesses.
So does that mean that there will be visits to the different vendors to make sure that they're complying with the ordinance that we have?
I wouldn't be able to tell you how many vendors we have or any specific number. I do know that we've identified some vendors that have been, you know, working here in the city in the past. One of the vendors obviously came to city council meetings and was very forthright about wanting to work with us and wanting to educate people on fireworks. So working with he and some of the vendors that we know of, yes, we'll, you know, work with them on this.
Okay, and one final thing is that the operational plan as presented goes from June 1st to July 5th. But we were changing language that clarified that this was not enforcement, was just not when they were being sold, but it was year-round. But yet the operational just goes, it doesn't even go to July 8th when sales still are going on through July 8th. Nor does it address the sales time in December 10th to January 3rd. So is this, I know it says tentative, is this going to be expanded to include those additional dates?
We didn't have any, we first, we weren't directed to cover those other dates. Again, as the police department with the limited number of resources, we would have to then decide on what it is we're not going to do. This was a finite period of time. It was the period of time that we agreed to to do and presented to Mr. Bozen and Mr. Foyce. And working with them and with my staff came up with what we thought might be a more effective measure of dealing with this problem. And that is the plan you have in front of you.
Okay. One more?
Certainly.
And that is, that does not mean that when complaints come. And that is, that does not mean that when complaints come in after these dates for people setting off fireworks, that they will not be responded to by the police department.
No, it doesn't, but I think that further reinforces the need for people other than just the police department to be able to cite, because as we widen our ability to cite, then more than just the police officer could conceivably respond and then cite a person if they're in violation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Chief Traylor, unless you want to bring it back to do a complete ban, because I thought this was a compromise, right?
Well, all I...my question was, was for Mr. Morrissey, because I believe number three was his language, that he put in in August of last year. So, we've been going around in circles on this, but isn't this your language?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it is.
I just want to clarify that.
I wanted to clarify why you weren't clarifying that.
Said and done.
Simple question, simple statement.
Patriona Far chief, I'd just like to add one thing to what Chief Fitzgerald said. So, the state issues the permit for these vendors to be able to sell, and they review their plan, their products that they're selling, and then the state also inspects these sites. Had they chosen to give the revenue to us, the dealers, we would have done the inspections. The state was in our community last year. I anticipate them to be in our community this upcoming year, and will assist them whenever they call on us. So, there's that oversight from the state as well.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Thank you.
Yeah, I started with you. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second. Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Twenty-six.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing sections one and two codes adopted, and amendments to the Code of Chapter Twelve Dangerous Buildings Title Nine Building Regulations and Reserving the Same, and ordinance repealing and reserving sections of the Dangerous Buildings Code.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Counsel questions. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Klein, yes. Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Mr. Peterson, are we right and in order?
I find that the statutory grounds exist to go into closed session, Your Honor.
Motion's been made, motion's been made with the second, and we're doing it the right way. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right.